And we are live.
The Chair notes the time is seven oh three. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZVA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZVA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Craig Meadows is absent. Mr. Emerald Henry.
Here.
Mr. Philip White.
Present.
And Mr. David Slavert.
Present.
The quorum is present. Also attending tonight's public hearing is Jacinta Williams, a planner for the town, and Nate Malloy, Senior Planner for the town. Carolyn Murray of KP Law will also be in attendance to provide us guidance and assistance. Pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty-one and extended by Chapter two of the Acts of twenty-two, twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi-judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, and Article ten, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised, and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by the town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and its ZVA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask for ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed his questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from a closed hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing for the variance to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed, the town clerk gives a twenty-day appeal period for the aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda: A Public Hearing on ZVA twenty-two-five-zero-four. Wayfinders, Inc. requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-B, to construct a thirty-one-unit mixed-income rental housing unit building in a three-story development with fourteen proposed parking spots on the premises of Thirty-One Southeast Street, MAP fifteen-A, parcel twenty, in the RBC or Village Center Residence Zoning District, and a forty-seven-unit mixed-income rental housing building in a three-story building with forty-six proposed parking spots on the premises of Seventy Beltrat Town Road, MAP fifteen-C fifty-eight, fifteen-C fifty-nine, fifteen-C sixty, in the RN and FPC Neighborhood Residents and Flood-Proon Conservancy Zoning Districts. This hearing is continued from November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. After that, there's a general period of comment on any matter not before the board tonight from the public, other business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours, and adjournment. The first item on the agenda is ZVA FY twenty-two-five-zero-four. Wayfinders, Inc. requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-B, to construct thirty-one units at Southeast Street and forty-seven units at Beltrat Town Road. Do any members of the board have any disclosures to make? Submissions since our last meeting. There's been a there was revised project application, draft public application report with the conditions. There was a submission regarding a management plan. There was, and the management narrative and some amendments to that. There was additional changes and modifications to the waivers for both projects that were submitted. And there was I think that was, that was the submissions from the in the, in the last week. Are there any others?
No, that's it.
That's it, right?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yes.
Great. Well, what I thought we should do is, the goal tonight will be to try to go through conditions and give preliminary decisions on as many of the conditions as we possibly can. And I'd like to do that. We'll just, we'll run through them as far, and get as far as we can get. I think we can make it through the conditions tonight. I also want to kind of follow up on what we requested from the applicant last week. The first one was a, some modifications to the management plan narrative. Specifically, it was on snow removal, parking. I think that was, those are the most.
And staffing.
And staffing, yes. Snow, snow removal, parking, and staffing. We got a copy of those just before the meeting. Did every member of the board see the email with the redline version of the management plan narrative? Okay. And what's important about that is that the management plan itself refers to the management, oh, all refers to the management plan narrative as the, the reference for the management plan. So this is the, effectively, the management plan is the, is the narrative. So the first is the office hours for the staffing. And I think, I know I raised that issue, and I think you've done a pretty good job being committed to providing office hours and providing flexibility to the the tenants, especially those tenants that work nine to five, and are not going to be able to be there on time when your staff is normally there, the normal business hours. You know, I don't think it's reasonable to ask you to set aside specific hours to have that available. It should probably work to the flexible, probably be flexible so it can work with what the needs of the clients are. But what's important is that you're saying in your management plan, you are committed to, I seem to see that someplace. Where is that on the narrative?
On the bottom of the first page, the second.
Yeah, you know, that came off my printed version, but I did see that you were committed to doing that. So I think we can hold you responsible for that. But mine didn't, the red ink, red ink didn't print up on the bottom of the first page. I saw it on the, on the online version. Is it, Mr. Slavert?
Yes, I, oh, are you posting?
Yes. I'm Jamie Gruber, representing Wayfinders, seventeen eighty Main Street, Springfield, Mass. And here is the, the red line. Are you all able to see my screen, the management plan narrative?
Yep.
Okay. And.
I couldn't see it on my printed version, so thanks. Mr. Slavert, do you have a question?
Yes. Yes, I had a comment more than anything, a change I think I might like to see in that section which you brought up. It says that the team are committed to accommodating residents' schedules. I think I would like that change to, from are committed to will accommodate. It seems more of a definitive statement that being committed to doing something and promising to doing something are not exactly the same thing. And I would like Wayfinders to accommodate the residents' schedules more than intending to do it. Now, if this is splitting hairs, this is not a hill I'm willing to die on, but it is something I'm not thrilled in, in a discussion like this with being committed because that gives enough room to say, well, we were committed to doing it, but we found it too difficult or too expensive. And I want to make sure it actually happens. So I'm, I'm raising that point. If there is no support, or if that is considered to be a meaningless difference, I can let it go, but it's a feeling that I, I think it's worth addressing.
And, and Mrs. Slavert, you have my support on that because that is a very good point. I'm saying we're committed and/or making reasonable efforts are very different than actually doing the actual commitment. So if I may ask this question of Wayfinders, and I, I know you guys were detailed with how you staff, and that's appreciated that you were, but do you, does this mean that you will now have someone there on Saturdays as part of your regular rotation of staffing? And I don't mean like maintenance staff. I mean like legitimate property management where members have concerns outside of maintenance?
I'll respond to that. We, you know, in our presentation in October, I think, at the seventeenth meeting, oh, Ellen was speaking.
Okay.
We, you know, we discussed how, how we handle and how we, you know, do our best to accommodate off-hour, off-hour meetings and having standard office hours to accommodate special schedules seems like that just would lead to more, you know, more difficult, more difficulty. And so this is what our staff had recommended doing is saying, you know, we are committed to accommodating residents' schedules because that's what we do. You know, we're willing to accommodate them, and we work with them to find a time that will, you know, i- if they need that, that's what we're, you know, willing to do. As far as changing the wording in this, I, I don't think that that changes the intent, but I'm happy to run that by my, our, our, our staff to see if, if, if they are willing to do that. This is, this is from our property management team directly, this, the, the wording of this, and it is the intent, and we are committed to accommodating the, the residents' schedules by, by offering it, just, just as, as what it says. And we do that all the time at our, at our properties now, and, you know, that's, that, that's, that's what we do. So, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, run any sort of language by our, our team, and I, and I can certainly get back to you on that.
So it seems to me that you, both those, both Mr. Henry and Mr. Slavert's points are well taken. And it does seem to me that if you are, will, that you should change, I would encourage you to encourage your staff to accept the notion that the property management team will accommodate. And that would mean that sometimes they have to be there on weekends, and sometimes they have to be there, or they have to make accommodations for after-hours availability to tenants. So I think that's a good change. Will means you will accommodate. And I think that's, I think you should do that. Does that answer your question, Mr. Henry?
I, I think it's Ernie Schwartz has her hand up, so maybe we should hear from her first.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Ms. Fryman.
I'm sorry, I was gonna change my name again. I apologize.
You got the whole firm right now.
I know. I don't know how to make that permanent. Okay, re-name. Well, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna talk, I, I can't speak for the management group, but we'll, we'll definitely discuss it. But another way to maybe say this is that we will accommodate to the best of Wayfinders' ability, because I just don't know what other, you know.
I, you know, I I really liked the, the will as, and not give you, not providing sort of I don't know, way out.
And I.
You know, it's.
Well, we'll talk, I mean, again, you know, Wayfinders, this is, they've done, managed many, many, many properties of, you know, do, do a good job, and their residents are happy. So, you know, we're gonna, we'll just go back and make sure this works and, and talk about it without committing to what we, what we can do.
And, and just for clarity, I, I don't necessarily think that, and Mrs. Slavert can speak for himself, I don't think we're necessarily asking that you have staff there every Saturday. Yeah. That's, that's not what I'm asking. Yeah.
And, and that is not, that is not what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting a, a drastic, permanent establishment of, of office hours outside of the normal business week. I want, I would like to see more of a commitment to making sure that you accommodate the, the residents. And quite frankly, if, if that, that would mean that if there were significant, significant complaints that you were, that Wayfinders was not accommodating them properly, then that would be a violation of something. I, you know, I don't, if there's a pattern of unavailability, then that would be a problem that I think I hope would never arise. I'm not trying to back anyone into a corner, but I want to make sure that it's more than a statement of, we'll do the best we can.
Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Chair. Hi. Yeah, I would absolutely support that. It's funny, when I was reading the management plan, I kind of had a similar thought, but it was based off of, and I of course realize that Wayfinders is no way whatsoever involved in this example. But I have a storage unit here in the area. In the little bit under a year that I was using them, they have multiple locations all around us in different, you know, towns. I have never once actually saw a person. When I spoke to them and said, look, I had an issue, they said that they too were committed to having all of their customers' needs met. Yet, the only person that you can ever get up with is a number that is a twenty-four-hour hotline. I finally took my business somewhere else. And thankfully, I, you know, I'm not a low-income individual, so I have other options and can go wherever the market leads me. But that's exactly what I thought of. Like I said, I understand that that's not Wayfair or Wayfinders. But that's exactly what popped into my head when I was reading this verbiage. So that's why, I, that's why you saw me shaking my head as soon as Mr. Slavert mentioned that. But yeah, I would encourage that as well.
Good. Well, I think you've heard the the desires, the opinion of the board pretty clearly on this. That you will accom, will accommodate is what, is what we're looking for. Bring it back to the staff, let them know that that's not, we're not being unreasonable, but that's what we, you will accommodate it. You'll do, and nobody can hold you, hold you to an impossible standard, but that your, your, your commitment is to accommodate. And as opposed to committing to accommodate, and that would make a ton of sense. So I think you got four board members here that, that approve that. All right. So any other comments, board members or Ms. Fryman or Mr. Gruber?
Oh.
Yes, Ms. Fryman.
I'll just close by saying, you know, the town does have experience with Wayfinders. I don't think there's ever been a complaint, so you know, that they come from the place of having great, you know, vast experience doing this. So when they say they're gonna do something, they're gonna do it. So just, just wanna close with that.
Yeah, I agree. And I want you to do it, and what I think you heard the board say, we want you to do it, not just you're not just committed to doing it, but you're, you'll actually do it. So that's, I think that's good. All right. The next thing was on trash, was on parking. And really what you've done here is you said that you're going to have parking will be monitored by Wayfinders onsite staff. This is at Beltrat Town Road. And property management, they will mon, they will monitor the parking lot usage as required. So you aren't committing to to having a tags or any other kind of mechanism at this point in time. Is that right?
That, that, that's correct. They're going, they're going to register the vehicles and, and manage it, you know, on an as-needed basis. And just looking at that now, I see how that reads, that it would just be on Beltrat Town Road, but that's for both sites. So I can, I can update that to make sure that, you know, it's the same, the same, you know, the same for both sites.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so that'll be updated to include East Street as well, right?
Yep.
Okay.
May, may I just ask?
Yes.
A question about the vehicle. The language as it's written doesn't make provisions for guest parking. Was that deliberate?
Mr. Gruber?
As far as
It talks about registering, you know, owners shall register their vehicles, and anything that's unregistered will be towed. What if there's a guest, or will there be guest parking spaces? I mean, we already talked about limited parking. So I imagine there must be a conversation about that somewhere. I'm just asking, it didn't make it on paper.
Yeah, so I, I believe we have fifty-two spots at Beltrat Town Road and the forty-seven units. So there's a, you know, a surplus of, of, of parking spots that, you know, would, we would anticipate being intended for, you know, guest, guest parking. That, you know, depending on the duration of the, the parking, that's, you know, if, if there was gonna be a guest there for an extended period of time, or you know, overnight or something like that, they would have to make some sort of, you know, provisions with our management staff to just let them know.
Do you wanna? So that, is that your policy in other pla, in other places? Is that you, you informally have people guest parking permitted, and if it's, it's not a problem unless it stays too long, it's, or do you wanna say? I think Mr. Henry has the notion that maybe you should just put a sentence in here that says guest parking will be at the discretion of the of the management company. And tenants are encouraged to, tenants should notify the management company if they have guests that are gonna be there for more than six hours or something.
And then, and I know most apartment complexes, they have like guest pass. So even if you just issue something so a resident can say, have your guest put this on their car. So you know, it's a guest, then they're, they're not just parking there randomly.
Even just a sentence saying guest passes would be available to the, to be used by non-residents and are available from the, the management office?
Okay, yeah, we can, we can, we can update that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding parking? All right, guest passes. You know, I know I pushed on snow removal. And I, I think you've, I mean, you what you've done here is, is pretty much restated what you said before, is that you guys will determine when it's, when you need to have it moved off-site, and that you're really not comfortable in, in having a you know, a measure put down on the, the management plan as to when, the number of inches of when you move it off the, off the site. And while last week I thought that'd be helpful, when I think, as I thought about it, you're not gonna know until you, you've operated the site for a while, how much snow is, how much snow has fallen that would require you to take it off-site, especially on the Beltrat Town roadside. I think you, it may not be an awful lot, but you're not gonna know what that is. You can't, I don't think you can commit to once, once four inches of snow are on the ground, you gotta take it off the, off the property. You've gotta manage a whole lot of drainage. You gotta manage the, gotta conform with the CONCON on how that's done. And I, so I think you've stated what you intend to do. And if it's, if it's a problem, the town and other people will know about it in the future, and the residents will complain. But I think that's, I, I think you indicated what your intent is here, and I don't know how you get more specific and lock something that may not make a lot of sense. So I'm comfortable with this. I don't know if other members are. All right. Unless there's any objection, I, I can live with that. All right. Those, that was, those are the updates to the management plan. Any other questions regarding the management plan or the management narrative, which is the effective management plan? Okay. There will be a question, I will have a question when we get to the conditions on what's in the management plan, but that's not what we need to go through right now. All right. The next order of business was Mr. Henry, you wanted to talk a little bit, last week you talked about the application process. You want, you had some questions about that. Did you wanna follow up on that, or did you get a chance to look at the documents and are you satisfied?
I, I am satisfied. I, I, I think the team did a very thorough job of walking through their process. And I think the fact that there's so many guidelines as to what they have to comply with, I, I think I'm okay. I don't, do I need to spend any more time on it? Yeah.
All right. So was it gonna be an update on the lighting, in the discussion with the neighbor next door? Did you have that, has that happened yet, or is that gonna be the next meeting?
Um, you know, I followed up, and I guess one of the things I just wanted to ask is that I, I was, you know, gonna present the new plan, and I sent the new plan to the neighbor to discuss that, but originally, I think the intent was, is that it was to discuss the light trespass on their property, in that we've since redesigned the, the lighting the, the lighting design so that there is no light trespass onto the neighbor's property. So I'm happy to keep reaching out to them to, you know, follow up, and I will, just because, you know, we're, we're we've discussed with them over the time, but it, you know, it seems as though it's the you know, sort of a point at this, and, and if we could close this out, I would, I would like that. If the board's willing to do that.
Yeah. So it seems to make sense. The lighting plan indicates that there's, there's not gonna be trespass there. And if there is, if there is trespass and it's shown, then, then you're in violation of the lighting plan, and you've gotta fix it, but I think that's fine.
I also, I also felt that you guys did due diligence, reaching out with no response, so, yeah.
That's fine. Good. And that's it. That's, I think, all the questions from last meeting. Anybody else have any questions regarding last meeting before we go into conditions? All right.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did you wanna look at the marketing plan?
Oh, I think Mr., Mr. Henry was, had the question about, oh, the marketing plan, I'm sorry. The application process is one thing, the marketing plan is something else. I, I looked at it before. I thought it was pretty substantive, pretty substantive. I just didn't have the chance to look at it before the last meeting. And I think they've an awful lot, they've done quite a lot trying to market the plan. Thank you for that. All right. Let's go to conditions. What I thought we, the best way to do this is to take them by sections. They're broken down. Regulatory is the first. Work through them, and Ms. Williams, I think the best way is for you to put this up on the board. And Ms. Murray, feel free to, since I, I know you prepared this document we're gonna be looking at. Ms. Murray, please feel free to describe or interject our, in our discussion on these conditions.
Certainly.
So the first sect, first well, when you get a chance, Ms. Williams, I know you're gonna put that up. I'm looking at the, an old version, so my numbers are wrong. The first section is regulatory. Most of this is almost all of this is pretty much boilerplate. There we go.
Can I just have a question?
Yes.
So, so we have gone through all the conditions. So, so should we just, like, indicate when we come to one that we wanna talk about? Okay, do that.
I think it's it's gonna be indicated on the the. The document as well.
But we we have gone back since that we received this one, so there might be, might not be, but we'll we'll let you know.
All right, yeah, just raise your hand.
Okay.
Let us know, all right, the first is regulatory conditions. Number one, standard, you gotta do it, you gotta build it as a as a plans, the approved plans. Two, this describes the. The the units, and I think it's an accurate description now, right? So. I'll ask. A wayfinder to make sure that these are the right numbers, the units. Twenty-three, seventy-eight units is followed, thirty-one units with the mix, forty-seven. It seems to be right, all the the breakdown by area median income are all correct, correct?
Yeah, I believe they are, Mister Chair, but we will certainly do a. A further read through of all of this to make sure we caught everything.
All right. Next one is three. This is. I don't know what a spring regulatory agreement is. I it's, it sounds like something that's hard to grab a hold of, so.
It's 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 sort of a a legal term and and one that we devised internally. So this is what would be the local regulatory agreement between the town and wayfinders. But it is springing because it will only take effect if, for some reason, the regulatory agreement. Between the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities and wayfinders, for some reason, terminates, or if. You know, housing livable communities ceases to exist as an entity, for example. So we, this is our belt and suspenders approach to make sure that there's still someone monitoring. The affordability at these sites.
All right, so this springs into effect. ELOC, E, however, whatever it is. No longer exists, okay?
Yes.
Number, again, if anybody, oh, Ms. Fryman.
Thank you, so a couple of things here, so we expect that the. HLC regulatory agreement will be in perpetuity, so I don't know that we need the springing agreement, and if not. If, since the town is going to be a party to that agreement, if for some reason. E, HLC says they're no longer, you know, they they reduce it to fifty years or something, I don't know why that agreement couldn't still continue on. Relative to the town to avoid a second agreement. Then the second issue we have is the fact that. It it talks about recording this agreement before any site disturbance, and I'd sent some. Suggested language to Attorney Murray because we typically on on all projects that we're involved with. Before we close, getting close to closing, but we were not closed yet. We usually do a a early notice to proceed to the contractor so that they can start doing site work. They don't need a building permit to do this work, but they get started, so I might call that some site disturbance. And so we can't get a building permit until we have the final approval from HLC. And and then that all happens at the time we're closing, so I just suggested some language that we wouldn't do any site disturbance before. See, let's see, what do I say here? We'd like to change accord of the condition to provide the work pursuant to the building permit, cannot begin until the regulatory agreement is recorded. And the final approval is obtained from HLC, so so we're asking for that modification, and also just to consider. That we, I think we can still work within the same, you know, the one regulatory agreement.
Mister Henry, I see your hands raised.
I have a question for Attorney Murray. Do we have a definition of site disturbance, or is it just what we're thinking it is?
I I, there is no specific definition, so site disturbance would be, you know, if there was gonna be some like. Initial clearing and grading, et cetera, on site.
Okay, thank you.
So I. I am. I can't, I can't decide what I think about whether there should be a springing agreement or not, and I have to leave that up to to be. My opinion needs to be eliminated by the discussion between Ms. Murray and Ms. Fryman. On the last thing, I think we should. Provide some ability for them to do minor work, and not to delay it any longer than possible, but. The notion of belts and suspenders does not. Cause I'm not against that, as long as it's not absolutely impossible that it's gonna happen.
And and I'd be happy, Mister Chair, to take another look at. You know, the regulatory agreements that we get from the subsidizing agencies are pretty standard, and yes, the town is a party to it, I I agree with Attorney Fryman on that. But if it were to terminate for some reason. It doesn't automatically transfer to us, it then just terminates. So I don't think we wanna be in a position, and and maybe it's, you know, it's a very low risk that this will happen. But I don't think we wanna be in a position, say, fifty years from now. Saying, well, wait a minute, this project was supposed to be affordable in perpetuity. And now we're tracking down the current owners and management committee. To get, you know, a an agreement in place.
See, an agreement that's recorded, that's not, I mean, when is it in effect, and how does that get determined? I I just don't wanna get things too confusing for all of the other lenders, and as you know, there's many parties to these deals, and so. I'm just thinking of trying to keep it a little more streamlined, that's all.
No, and I I can appreciate that, I can just tell you that it's, this is a pretty standard condition that. That my firm uses, not just in Amers, but in other forty Bs throughout the state. And I've never had any developer come back and say, we couldn't get financing because there's this local regulatory agreement out there. But.
Are you saying it's gonna affect the day it gets recorded, or you're saying it's not in effect until?
No, it it doesn't actually take effect unless or until. The regulatory agreement with EO HLC terminates.
I haven't seen that.
Okay.
Okay. So on the site disturbance language, what, is there a a different term of art, do we wanna say? I don't know what you wanna say on that.
Mister Chair, Mister Malloy has his hand up, FYI.
Mister Malloy, I did not see that, thank you.
Oh, sure, yes, thanks, the. And sometimes instead of doing a springing regulatory agreement, we'll just write in. Within the regulatory agreement, there's a few sections where it says that if the state defaults or transfers, then it just goes to the town, and so. In some instances, we just, we modify the language of the regulatory agreement. In a few places, and it can substitute for a springing agreement, and so it names the town as. You know, taking over or somehow the state backs out or defaults, and then it just transfers to the town, so there might be a way to do it without a second agreement, but. You know, we can discuss that with with Carolyn and and the team.
That's what I was talking about.
And and I'm open to that, I would just say, I've had instances where the subsidizing agency has pushed back on changes to their regulatory agreement, so. Open to it, I'm fine, we just want agreement.
So let's do this, let's do this. Ms. Murray and Ms. Freeman and Mister Malloy, if you wish to discuss it, or and Ms. Williams. Come back to us with three, with language that you agree upon on three, if you can, and we'll deal with it next week, but let's set this one aside. For today, for tonight, I think we've gone through the first two, so three is, let me just make a note of this, so we know. Cause we'll make a motion later, so number three is set aside. All right, number four. This seems like it's bookkeeping to me. But we want these counted in the subsidized housing index as much as possible, so. Is there? What is Wayfinder's problem with this, or?
I think it was, quite frankly, I think it was just really more of a question that I answered in terms of, you know, when. One of the units added to the SHI, so I don't think that was really requires any changes to paragraph four.
All right, so you're fine with it, let's move on to five then. This, again, you've got to annually. Recertify to the subs- this is something you have to do anyway. Let's go through, let's have all, can we get all of five up? Ms. Williams, there we go. No problem with five, no problem, is there a problem with number six? Now, number six is, one is eliminated by the board, does it mean?
I think actually, Mister Chair, that six was a bit redundant with number five above.
Yep, all right. So that one's taken out, I agree with that, we should agree with that change unless anybody has a objection to it. Number seven, I think is pretty straightforward, nothing limits the. Town's authority unless it's in the comprehensive permit, number eight.
We.
This is. Number eight is a discussion of local preference, now I. And I I think this would be a good time to have the discussion about local preference, although one of our members is not here. But. Local preference in this condition is seventy percent. The applicant has said they're willing to go for seventy percent, the town has been working towards seventy percent, and we've done seventy percent in the past. I think seventy percent local preference, given the nature of the. How broadly local preference is defined, and the nature of this. Property and the dramatic need that we can identify in the findings for. Affordable housing in our community, it's. It's an acceptable condition, I also think that it's just for the initial rent out, it's not for the entire time of the. Not for the entire existence of the of the building, so I have not, I am not troubled by this and indeed support the seventy percent local preference. For the initial rent out. Um, was, Ms. Fryman, is it a technical point, or I'd like to get, see if other board members have a position on seventy percent?
It's it's, it's relating to this paragraph, but not what you're talking about.
Okay, all right. Do other board members have a feeling either way on seventy percent, if they'd like to express? Local preference. Okay. Ms. Fryman.
So the issue we have with it as far as the reporting requirements and. I. Wayfinders is not required to submit documentation to the state regarding local preference, and. I understand that a lot of that information is deemed confidential, so they do not share that information. Without getting waivers from the tenants, we also, this reporting to the building commissioner is is vague in terms of. How frequent and what information, and so we we're asking that the second part of the. Provision be eliminated, if you wanna know, I guess, how many. Local residents are at some point, I I I have to bow to the to Wayfinders to say whether, you know, what they could provide, but. At this level, it was, it was. Exceeding what they're able to do.
All right, so let's go, so beginning with what sentence, what sentence? Is it the cost?
It starts. Maintain, it shall maintain, which record shall be opened to review by the town for compliance with the local preference. You you can leave the part where the applicant shall oversee and supervise the local preference process. But it's, but the second part of that sentence where it starts saying that the the town could come in and review records.
How do they oversee and supervise it if they can't see the records of who are local preference?
Oh, that, that, oh, you mean as far as the town?
Yeah, how do they supervise it if they can't review the records? The records can be anonymized, so there's no names on it, but.
Well. I mean, Wayfinder is gonna be. Implementing the process, so they're gonna maintain the record, so I don't know. For this, for the town to oversee and supervise that, if that's necessary.
The applicant shall oversee and supervise the entirety of the local preference process, and the applicant shall maintain records.
I mean, we're, we're the applicant, so.
Right, so you you oversee it.
So we're overseeing it, so, but the habit of, for the town to come in and review is. Exceeding what we can allow.
Mister Chair, if I, if I could interject here for a moment, if I remember during the the Valley CDC Comprehensive Permit Hearing. I think this paragraph, which is fairly standard, we did tweak it a little bit. Because, given that that was a rather unique Commonwealth Builders Program. And we had the whole issue with respect to qualified census tracts, and really wanting to see. The data behind who winds up living in some of those units. My memory is that we added some of this language in here about. The board or the town. Getting a little bit more of this information from the applicant than we would ordinarily receive. So where this one is a more conventional forty B. And not a newer program. I I don't know whether the board feels as strongly about having this language about, you know, the applicant reporting back to us. Say on the marketing activity.
So I think, and Attorney Murray, to your point. I I think one of the questions we had was, it comes back to the board, what do we do? What do we do?
Right, we don't want sensitive information like that with people's incomes and social security numbers, et cetera, is right.
Yeah, so it should go to maybe the town, but not to this body, yeah.
Right, and I know we haven't quite gotten there yet, but if we scrolled down further into paragraph eight. You'll, you'll see some other text that was struck out, that was also some language left over from the Valley CDC. Comprehensive permit, you know, going exactly to that, Mister Henry.
Well, I defer to Wayfinders to to say if, well, we can report to the town, whether it's, you know, the number of residents that are from the town, but. To provide marketing efforts, I, you know, I don't know, does that mean every time someone calls and says they're interested in. Seeing apartment, it's just very vague and broad, and again, just more than I think. We can make, we can really comply with.
What body has to approve the marketing plan, it's the state that has to approve the marketing plan, correct? Right, and all what we care about, I don't think we, maybe board members do, but I think as a board, as a town. What we care about is that we know that these local preference has been fulfilled, that we know that that. I'm not sure that we care about, that we wanna have the the marketing plan reviewed by the town after it's been reviewed by the state. Is that fair?
Can we put this in the same category as number three, and that we work on the language and then come back?
Mister Malloy, just a second, Mister Malloy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, no, sure, I agree, I think that statement that was highlighted can be removed, and then the last few statements after the applicant will will pay the cost can be removed. Typically, staff doesn't wanna see all that personal information, we'll be involved if there's an issue, if someone complains. But typically, you know, we we might just wanna know how many applicants were there generally, and, you know, some basic numbers, but we're not gonna actually review. That detailed information. It's not a position we wanna be in, actually.
So let's go back, where are we, we're on eight, can we have that up in front of us, that's one that was, we initially started on, let's. Ms. Williams, if we can scroll back up, all right, so. We are set on the seventy percent. And we're set on the definition of local preference, so we got the first pair, first sentence, the second second sentence, we're set on that. The applicant, and then it's where the applicant shall oversee and supervise the entirety of the local, that we're fine with up to the comma. The problem, it starts with the word which, right, am I incorrect, the problem starts with the word which. Which records and extends down through. The next sentence, what it is with the buil- building commission, reporting to the building commissioner on marketing activities. And that's what you're going to try to, you're going to discuss that, those last, to the end of that paragraph. You're gonna discuss that and come back with us, come back to us at the next meeting with a revised language for that, correct? Is that? Ms. Murray, is that right?
Uh, that'd be fine, Ms. Chair, I would just like to ask one thing while we've got the board here. Um, the sentence that says, you know, that the applicant shall submit to the building commissioner a report on the marketing activity, um, so that we see compliance with the, with the, with the affirmative marketing plan. I assume the board still wants a report to be made. I understand Ms. Freyman's concern about, well, what exactly is um, marketing activity, is every time someone makes a phone call and say, do you have any units available? No, I don't think that's marketing activity. But we want to know that the, the, the local preference, how it has worked out here, or that, um, the marketing plan was followed.
At what point, at what point are you looking for this report? Is it at one time, is it what, what?
So I, I, you know, I, I don't want to go into all the detail here tonight, I really want to, I think we want what Mr. Milloy said and what Ms. Maria said, is we want basic information. We don't want a lot of detail and we don't think, I don't think marketing is, you know, is, should be broadly construed. But I, what I, so given that, given that's what the board would like, I think if you, if the attorneys could talk with each other, come up with something that accomplishes that, come back to us next week, or the next time we have a meeting on this, we can proceed.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question for Takeaway.
Yes.
Given that the state approves the marketing plan, Attorney Freyman, what responsibility do you have to the state in terms of reporting your marketing efforts to them after they approve your plan?
Jamie, do you, I didn't believe that there was any follow-up reporting. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, you know, yeah, I'd have to, you know, they, they, they approved the, they approved, I know that they approved the plan and then we follow it and that's, you know, that's the way that, you know, the marketing plan goes. I would have to double check to see what the follow-up is, my understanding is, is that there, um, that there, uh, isn't a, a report that, that follows up, I mean, you know, on these developments, we get, you know, upwards of, you know, in a week from when they're advertised, we get seventeen hundred applications based on that for like, you know, forty units, that sort of thing, so that's the way that, you know, it, it that's the way that it goes and I, and I'm happy to follow up on that to see, you know, what the reporting requirements are of the, you know, of the marketing plan, but we follow, that's, it's a, um, you know, it's, it's listed as to what, what we have to do to not only follow the plan, but it is, you know, it is in the regulatory agreement with the, with the state, so. It's my understanding that this, this, the, it's all under the jurisdiction of HLC and the fundings.
So to the best of your knowledge, the state doesn't require you to provide any feedback on your marketing plan?
Well, I think we should just wait and get that information before we make any indication, so. So. And then we can work on the language based on what we find out.
Alright. So Ms. Williams, what do we have in front of us right now? Okay, there, there it is, okay.
I previously had the, um, what I suspected Attorney Murray might have been referring to from the Valley CDC decision, so I didn't know if anyone wanted to look at that quickly or not.
Thank you, no, I mean, maybe some board members does, but, but here's what I think we should do. We leave the first part of this paragraph intact and, um, considered, uh, tentatively approved. The other, you, we're going to have, um, KP Law as well as Ms. Freyman and the staff work on language that accommodates, um, the desires here for some basic knowledge, but not overburdened some reporting requirements and certainly no personal information coming to the town. Is that fair?
That's good.
Ms. Murray, can we do that? Let's do that. Alright, so number, we're coming back with, um, second half of number, is that number eight?
Yes.
Alright. Number eight, second half. Alright. Let's move on to the next condition, we've got seventy-three of these, so I'd like to keep moving. This, the stuff that's lined out was duplicative, right?
Right.
Okay. Then number nine, so the, number nine is the applicant shall develop a firm, how to plan.
We have one edit there.
The one edit is just, is grammatical, right?
Well, it refers to the, um.
Oh, you have one, I'm sorry, I thought you, alright, what is it?
And it says, the local, uh, preference requirement set forth above, and we just wanted to change that if applicable, since we don't have approval yet for local preference.
That's fine. You don't have a problem with that, Ms. Murray, do you?
I do not.
Good, let's do it. Alright, number nine is amended. Alright, number ten, so obtain final approval from the substantive pursuant to delivery of subsidy, final report is additional present site disturbance obstruction of any kind.
So I, I assume, Mr. Chair, that this is going to be similar to the other condition about talking about site disturbance and maybe it would just be tied to, um, work under the, the building permit once issued, so I can certainly work on some language.
So that's number, that's number ten, yep, same, same issue as number three.
Yes.
Alright. So that's the right, so what I'd like to do is tentatively approve and lock in those conditions that we've gone through with the exception of number three, num- the second half of number eight and, um, the second half of number ten. And I'd like to, to, unless there's an objection, I'd like to tentatively approve those conditions and the rest of them will come back and vote upon when we get the total package. Is there any, is there any objection to that from board members? This isn't a formal vote, but this is just going to speed up the process, alright. If there's no objections, we move on to the next section, which is utility, excuse me, utility management conditions. The, um, Wayfinders wanted to delete sewer connections to satisfy all, alright, this is a discussion about what this, this pertains to the discussion we had last week about whether you had to get a permit from the Public Works Department and the Department of, um, the water, yeah, the Department DPW, whether you needed to get, and the town engineer, whether you needed to get a permit or whether you just had to satisfy the requirements, ensure that it builds the plans which satisfy the requirements. I raised that issue last week and I pressed hard that I didn't know why you didn't have to get a building permit. I've talked with staff subsequent to that, um, who said that from, in all the comprehensive permits in the past, this is the type of language that has been used, which does not require an actual building permit from the, um, or not building permit, but a, a permit from the DPW uh, to be issued because it takes time, they could, it could delay things. If, this doesn't, this means that they have to approve it, this means they have to observe it, they have to have a site visit, the A being DPW and they have to, and the plan has to comply with the, the town's, um, requirements and they have to build it to the plan, so it seems like this is belt suspenders and the third thing that you normally would have on top of it. So the town has been satisfied in the past with the language as it, I think, as, um, was originally written. My, my concerns have been satisfied. Um, and that's been through my conversation, but I'd like to know if other people on the board have other questions, or if, um, either, Ms. Freyman, you have your hand up, but before I.
I think we can, I think we can maybe shorten the discussion by saying that we're okay with this as long as, you know, we have this language in here that they won't be unreasonably withheld and we'll do, you know, what's required to submit to the, to those boards.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, I'm confused about what's up in front of us, okay, what's, what do we got here?
So to add to this discussion, um, the building commissioner, myself and Chris sat down and revisited this language based on that conversation that you had. Um, and we were able to look at the language from the Beacon decision, which is similar to what is being proposed here, but it's a little bit clearer and it parses it out, I think, a little bit better, so that it's less confusing for everyone. Um, so this language would have been, we are suggesting it to be incorporated in the waiver, but also now that we're talking about it in the conditions to address it in the conditions as well, so that it reads a little bit more clearly as to what is actually being waived and, um, summarizing essentially what you just said.
So the language is the language in Peach, is that the language we're looking at?
No, this would be the new language.
Up there, to waive the requirements for separate depart, uh, DPW approval and allow water connection to propose. Include DPW input during comprehensive permit process. As an administrative matter, the applicant's contractor will apply for and obtain water connection permits. Comprehensive permits may also provide all local permits and approvals for. Okay. So the town, DPW and the applicant are all comfortable with this? Ms. Freyman, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Ms. Murray, are you comfortable with this?
I, I was just going to ask, I was, I was trying to write it down while Jacinda was also reading. Jacinda, could you scroll up just slightly? Because I thought I saw that w- w- you know, when are we supposed to get, or when's the applicant expected to get DPW input? Um,
let's see.
During the comprehensive.
During the comprehensive permit process.
And that's one thing, Mr. Chair, that we do not have yet.
Right, we don't have the plant, detailed plans yet, so I think it's, you know, before we get a building permit or in connection with a building permit.
We can, oh, go ahead, Mr. Gruber.
Yes, I just had a question, what, um, and if I read that, it says that the approval's not required, but we still need to get the permit, correct? Is that what that? Am, am I reading that, like?
I think what it is, is that you're, you're getting the, it's understood that you are getting the permit through the com- with the comp permit, but you're still needing to make sure you're paying the fees and that DPW is doing all the inspections and things like that, so basically, you're not going out and getting a separate permit. It's included with the comp permit, that's my understanding.
And if I would, I would just elaborate on that, that you'd still go through the steps of submitting your application to DPW with your plans when they're finalized, for them to review and make sure that it, uh, meets their standards and requirements, but to Attorney Freyman's point, DPW doesn't have the ability to deny the permit, they simply need to review it to make sure everything's consistent with their requirements.
Thank you for the clarification.
So should we perhaps change the language? We can always come back to that, but.
Jacinda, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending me that language in your, uh, little pop-up box there and, and I'll certainly, uh, words with it a little bit in the next draft.
Okay, sounds good.
We'll take a look at it too, but in concept, we agree.
Alright. So.
Let me go back to the other document.
Let's, let's go back, this is number eleven. Utility management, so utility management, you're coming back with clarified language.
Yes.
Alright. Any objection from the board members? I think that's all we can do, this is more complicated than I can, than we can resolve tonight, uh, because I don't have the, I don't know enough about the process to make that decision, so come back with language that you agree with to us and the town's comfortable with, uh, for the next time. Number twelve, the applicant shall be responsible pertaining all relevant approvals and not contained in this decision. Approvals were, okay. Right. What's the highlighted? What? What does the highlighted language mean? What's the significance of the highlight?
I, I think the significance of that, um, Ms. Chair, was just a reminder that uh, we still need to sort out whether the board was going to, how we were going to act, react with response to the waiver request, that are we in fact actually, you know, granting the permit? Um, I think honestly, twelve can be eliminated in the, and it can all be combined with the rewrite of number eleven.
Okay. Great. So strike through number twelve.
There's a leftover sentence in old, in the thirteen that's crossed out that I think we can eliminate too, since we already dealt with the lines.
You know, we're going to leave, um, that for Mr. We might be able to do that and Mr., um.
Mr. Meadows?
Mr. Meadows, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Meadows may want to have a comment on that, so we'll leave thirteen to when he's, when he can be here on, um, in person, alright. Let's deal with fourteen. I don't think there's any problem with having CAD plans shall be required. Number fifteen, stormwater features that are part of the project shall be designed not to hold water from where this is, um, these are all, I think the, this is what you've talked about, this, I think this reflects what was in the plan. Am I, I'm right, right? Same with number fifteen. Number sixteen, shall be constructed to prevent stormwater drainage leaving the project site, and there's no argument about that. Number seventeen, shallow depth, high groundwater, all stormwater structures shall require Department of Public Works inspection prior to being backfilled as required. Ms. Freyman, you have your hand up, is there something that?
Sorry.
Okay, alright. That should be, that's not, that should not be a problem, you have to, Public Works has to inspect. It's, I see a blue line in the, the, number eighteen, is there, Ms. Williams, what's the question about that? I think, I thought we discussed this a little bit previously, but it seems to me that, and everything underground is of maximum extent practical, that's what the town wants as well, isn't it?
The question in, is, it's saying, is this consistent with what the town wants to do with utilities? Um, I think that was just a note, I don't know that we resolved that or not.
Well, unless I, I, I'm in favor of underground, it, to the extent that we can get it done, let's, let's do it. If the town has a problem with this, they can come back to us next time. Uh, number nineteen, construction is not completed within twenty-four hours. From the issuance of the first building permit for this project, such schedules will be submitted to the board and the building commissioner as to this completion of the project. And Ms. Murray, you had a comment about that.
Right, just to make sure, um, that, that this is consistent with the land development agreement. Um, you know, if it had a different schedule or required, um, you know, completion by a certain timeframe, um, that maybe this twenty-four months would have to be adjusted to be consistent with the LDA, so I'll follow up with Nate on that one.
Alright, so number nineteen, for review for LDA. Alright. So that's, we've hit the second section of conditions, um, let's go to the top of that section again for the B, so from condition eleven, we have clar- we need to get clarified language on, on eleven, so we're not approving that. But we are approving twelve, the deletion of thirteen, but the exact, uh, we'll come back to thirteen for the pipe runs. The new thirteen, we approved, let's keep going down through it. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, we have review from LDA. Aside from eleven and nineteen and coming back on thirteen from Mr. Meadows. Mr. Gruber.
Um, yes, I just, I had in my notes that, uh, number twelve would be included and, would be stricken and included in eleven.
Yes.
Yes.
That will happen.
It's a clarified language, right? So we've got eleven.
And one other.
You're going to mention about fifteen, Jamie?
Sure, um, fifteen, the, um, Sure, um fifteen, the um. It it's uh prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall admit an operation uh maintenance plan. Um, to the Conservation Commission for review and approval, um they have rev- they. Through the um order of conditions, they are approving the um O and M plan for the um stormwater system, so. Are we able to remove this from the comprehensive permit because it's, um, you know, it's. It's being approved by the Conservation Commission through the notice of intent um in order of conditions permitting.
Uh Mister Chair, I'll defer to you, if you still want, have a level of comfort. Uh, we could certainly either delete this entirely because CONCOM has already approved the plan. Or if you like, we could just make a a finding that um. An operation and maintenance plan for the on waters onsite stormwater system. Has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission, could do that as well.
Just the latter.
A finding, okay. Will do.
Okay, that's fifteen. Okay, so. Beginning with number eleven and going through number nineteen, number eleven, we have to have clarified language which includes. The incorporation of twelve, number fifteen becomes a finding and number nineteen review from the um. What's the LA? The um.
LDA.
LDA, land development.
Development agreement, yes.
The LDA, LDA, all right. Aside from those, is there any objections to tentatively approving the rest of these conditions? If not, let's move on, citing improvements, C. Apply with all bylaws, rules and regulations of the town, of Amherst Inspector boards, unless I don't know how like, how you can disagree with that. And Ms. Fryman, your hand is up, I just wanna make sure I don't miss it when you really wanna talk.
I have a problem.
It's okay. So twenty is not a problem as far as I'm concerned, number twenty-one, the building plan shall maybe alter to set forth without returning to the board. If and only if the building commissioner determines the change to be minimal. And then we go through and just describe what is minimal, so, Ms. Williams, can you scroll down through these? This all seems to me to be, I've seen this language before. It seemed, I've gone through this, it seems to me to make sense that these are kind of minimal changes. In substantial changes on bu- um building footprints, substituting of light lighting fixtures. Additions to exterior like for safety or security or operational reasons, insubstantial shifts of no more two feet in walkways. Landscape plantings that they have to replace, interior changes to conform with code requirements. And exterior changes to meet superior energy efficiencies in the installation of a bike rack. Those are all, I think, insubstantial and doesn't need to, you know, we, it can be done with just building commission approval, okay? Twenty-two. Yeah, oh, okay, let's go back to twenty-two. She'll complete, the applicant's gotta, gotta comply with state laws on unmarked human burials. Twenty-three, prior to starting any activity. The commissioner uh should provide the building commissioner, they justify the building commissioner with a name, address and telephone of the project manager. That seems to make sense, number twenty-four. Uh before the issuance of a building permit, the construction logistics plan shall be submitted. And it shall include, all of these things are reasonable, timeline, parking. On and off-site staging, fencing, jersey barriers. Directional markets, uh markings, emergency contact information, construction signs. And any other relevant information that they may reasonably request. No problem there, I don't think. Twenty-five, construction logistics plan shall be subject to the following conditions, these are all standard seven to seven. Construction, uh no construction on the following days, uh no noise uh can occur prior to seven AM. Um, park, then we have some other additional restrictions. Which include parking for contractors shall be restricted to the project site, there shall be no parking or idling of construction vehicles in the public right of way. Noise attenuation, so, and for all motors and pneumatic equipment. And the applicant shall tell the building commissioner of any blasting ahead of time. I have no problem with any of that. Twenty, and these are all standard, we've seen them in the past, twenty-six, prior to starting any construction activity. The contractor's gotta meet with the building director, the building commissioner and the planning director and the town engineer. And you gotta discuss all this stuff that I think is standard, none of this stuff is a, is burdensome. To the, to the applicant and all is necessary to have a conversation about this. Twenty-seven, engineer of record needs to be um. Provided, the name needs to be provided, the building commissioner, that shouldn't be a problem. Twenty-eight, active construction areas within the project. Um, site shall be fenced during construction activity, Mister Gruber, your hands up.
Um, yes, uh before we get too far along, can we just um go back up to uh twenty? Um, this, this actually ties in with uh one of the um. One of the waivers that we uh re- requested regarding the um, the the project plans. Um, and things that may have been, um, you know, inadvertently sort of missed on a waiver, missed on the project plans. Um, we'd ask that we work on language to include, um, you know, in in if there's a variation. And you know, the a waivers. Missed, not, you know, not not intentionally, but it's it's, you know, provided that it it would be acceptable if. If they, um, you know, if something was missed, but it's shown on the plans. Is that um something that uh Attorney Murray and and um Attorney Fryman would be able to work on some language? For?
You know, isn't that, that was the waiver discussion we had last week that we were unable to. Come to a conclusion on, and that some of us were worried that that seemed to be kind of a catch-all. Waiver for um. undefined. I don't mean it's intentional on your part, but undefined. Um, violations of either uh zoning bylaws or other town regulations. And there were some, there was some, as I remember, there was some concern about that, um, that language. And so I. Um, and we're not dealing with that waiver at the tonight's meeting, that's gonna come up. The next time we, we have waiver, with the next, at the next meeting, we'll have waivers. So. Miss, I would ask, Ms. Murray, you were also part of, you know, part participant in that discussion last week. Does the, does a condition, if if we would provide a waiver that conflicts with the condition, which rules?
Say that again, Mr. Chair, if you were to grant.
We have a waiver and a, if a waiver that says one thing and the condition says something else, which one takes precedent? Or is it just a conflict and you can't figure it out?
Well, I I I, I would say whatever the most explicit provision happens to be, and i- it could be either. Um, but I think what the applicant is proposing that if there's a discrepancy between what's shown on the plans. And the waivers, that what is shown on the plan would prevail.
That's correct. And we wouldn't need the waiver.
And then that blanket waiver would come off the waiver list.
The blanket waiver, the waiver that we were all concerned about the last meeting comes off the waiver list and. And and so what we're saying is that if it's on the plan. Right, state that again, if it's on.
Right. So if there is a discrepancy between what is shown on the plan and any of the waivers. That what is shown on the plan shall prevail.
Seems. That seems sensible to me. What should I be worried about?
No, I I think. Uh, no, I think it does, I I I think it does address both sides concerns, cuz you're, you are absolutely right, Mr. Chair. Last week, it did seem a little too broad, like, oh, yes, we forgot, you know. Oh, we forgot to tell you that the building's actually fifty-five feet high, you know, so the waiver is granted. Um, I think the waiver was a little bit more broad in that even if it was something that was just kind of forgotten. But otherwise seemed to be discussed as part of the the comprehensive permit uh process. That the waiver could be granted, this is at least locking us into the plans. And we might not have memorized every minor detail shown on those plans. But we have seen the plans, we have required revisions to the plans. And your decision is ultimately going to say, we're comfortable with those plans.
Okay, so we need. An amendment to, we need an amendment to condition twenty. That you're gonna come up with for our next meeting.
Yes, and I'll also delete that blanket waiver.
All right. So. We have from, so twenty is not decided yet. But we have twenty-one, conditions twenty-one through, scroll down to the bottom.
One moment, sorry.
Down to through. No, 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 we're we're.
I think I went past it.
Yeah, you went past it, you just have to go to. All right, twenty-six, we're gonna go down through twenty-six, keep scrolling. Twenty-six, uh where's twenty-seven, yes. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, all right. So we, yeah, we got through all this, construction drainage, construction of projects, all right, hold on, stop on. Um, scroll back up, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams. We got to thirty-three. Thirty-four is, should be protected from soil and debris, that's no problem, stumps can't be buried. Exterior lighting should include pole lights, detached building lighting, shall be dark sky compliant, shall be downcast, scroll down. Shielded, and I think this has something about it being um. As per the rules of the ZBA, thirty-seven is managed to provide for snow storage is in the approved plans. The applicant, the applicant should provide amenities as shown in the approved plans. The town engineer and building commissioner shall inspect the construction and internal driveways, I don't think that's a problem. We're deleting this surety bond. I. So. Forty-one, why don't we need a cer- a surety bond? We've had that surety bond, we've had that in other cases. What's the reason that Wayfinders doesn't wanna have a surety bond, aside from just that it's it's costly? It requires some a payment, but is there other protections for the town that's in place here that would? Um, obviate the need for s- a surety bond? Ms. Fryman?
Yeah, I just was wondering what the um purpose of it was, um, and what, you know, what, when would you exercise the rate to? To um cash in on the surety bond, we, we have to have a performance um lien bond, um. And uh, you know, a payment performance and lien bonds for the lenders during construction. So I'm not sure what other surety bond you are, you're referring to, would, you know, when it would be exercised.
Ms. Murray, I know we've had this in the past, um, what are we trying to protect ourselves against with a surety bond in this case?
Well, if we just look at the opening lines, it's to protect any town-owned property, and let's not forget these, both, both of these sides. Um, but I I I do understand the the applicant's concern that. This is gonna be a ninety-nine year ground lease and um still gonna be town property for ninety-nine years. I don't think we are expecting them to have a bond for ninety-nine years. Um, my, my assumption is, is that what we were looking for is protection during construction. So that in the event something, you know, something happens where part of that school building. Crumbles and it uh was not part of the the planned demolition. W- we wanna know that we've got some sort of provision in place to protect us. So I think if it provides any comfort, we could, we could just say. That the the bond shall be in place until the um issuance of an occupancy permit.
Can I just ask again, so what would you be doing then with the? I mean, again, we have all these lenders, there's all kinds of protections with um during construction that they could step in and. Uh, take over, repair, whatever, um, with all the bonds they have, I'm just trying to figure out how that, how the. What role the town would do in that situation.
Well, typically, we like it that, we hope that we never have to exercise a bond, because it becomes very cumbersome for us to do it. Um, you know, the payment bond is protect your subcontractors, the performance bond, yes. If you get halfway through the con- uh through the project and then. Um, you know, go bankrupt or something like that, yes, the the performance bond is supposed to make sure the project gets completed. But again, uh you know, I don't know if the town has any history with any. Uh, problems to town-owned property or any damage to town-owned property or even, you know, let's say it could be a culvert, you know. Drainage infrastructure, something like that, that gets damaged in the construction process. I don't know that your performance bond would necessarily cover that type of damage to town property.
Hmm, well, again, we we're concerned about the cost, I don't, I don't know what this would be, I, I. Trying to keep costs down, so.
So you, you know, I, in the other, I, we've had cer- surety bonds for, I think, every other um forty-B. That we've done before. What I would like you to do is take a look. I'm inclined to want a surety bond, let's take forty-one out and have a further discussion about this. We've got a month until you're gonna be back in front of us, we can have some more information. Um, and perhaps you can come up with a. Either you can reassure yourself that the cost is not gonna be. Uh, in, you know, not gonna be a burden, or if there's other ways to protect the town. Um, I don't know what would be cheaper than having a bond to do that, but if there's other ways to protect the town from um inadvertent damage to its property. We can look at that, but. Let's, let's exempt forty-one from the tentative approvals.
Mr. Judge, if I may, if I may just ask a question of Attorney Fryman. Have you guys not have bonds in your other projects before?
No, I haven't, but, no, and I understand from Wayfinders that the other two projects, they had an Amherst, there was no surety bond.
Not Amherst, just bonds in general on any of your projects.
No, I have not, not with related, not from the town. Not as, it was not a condition of a forty-B.
But I'm sure that we had it with one thirty-two. I'm pretty sure we had it with both one thirty-two and Ball Lane.
Well, I understand Olympia and Better Nut, both in Amherst, and Olympia is a ground lease too, so. There's no requirement.
All right, let's, let's get some history on this and see if this is standard operating procedure.
The law has his hand up.
Yes, I I I, I'll get him in just a second. And let's first, let's find that out, Mr. Malak.
Sure, thanks, uh, yeah, we don't call the bond unless it's needed, and so it's not like. I mean, typically, we'd have a condition like this and almost, and a lot of permits, and if we find that there are impacts or damage, then we would. We would want, we would wanna get a bond, I mean, I'm not sure we're gonna, you know, have it from the beginning unnecessarily. I I mean, I don't know if we need to rework it a little bit, but this is a standard condition, I thought we had it in other comprehensive permits as well, but. It's not, yeah, right. But we can look into it to see if the wording can be modified, it's, you know, as um Carolyn said, this is just a safeguard if it's needed, it's. Typically, we, you know, it's not, so.
Getting the bond, there's still a cost involved, whether you, you know, need it or not, so, well, I like, we will talk, we'll look into it, like you've got to do.
All right, but, so we're clear, we're just looking at during construction, we're not looking at a hundred-year bond here, we're looking at it. There's potential damage during construction is really what we're looking at. All right, forty-one is out for the time being, we're gonna have some further discussions on that, we'll come back. Forty, oh, how does this get? So that is number, I guess, scroll back up, that's number thirty-nine. Uh, whatever, forty-one, the struck out forty-one, we'll come back to, forty, number forty within ninety days. Following completions, the applicant shall provide. As-built plans that show, all right, that's standard. Forty-one, the certificate of occupancy for the final unit shall not be issued until the work has been substantially completed as verified by the architect or appropriate. Um, you don't want the specifics of the top coat. Um, you don't want the specifics of the top coat landscaping and as-built plans. Have they already had, what's the reason for the objection to the, to A, B, and C? Mr. Gruber or Ms. Fryman?
Jamie, what was the, um?
Um, we would want the design professionals to be, to make the determination as to, um, you know, what substantially complete. And, and um, as far as the as-built plans. Um, you know, sometimes there's a, there's a bit of a time lag in, in getting that, you know, for the. Uh, you know, the certificate of occupancy, so, you know, depending on. What is considered, you know, the as-built plans, the as-built plans for the building, the as-built plans, if. You know, some of the, some of the landscaping still needs to be completed, we just like this to be. Um, you know, what would be substantially complete by the, you know, by the design professional.
As opposed to the town? Making that decision. You want you, your, your builders or and your architects to make the decision that it's substantially completed as opposed to the town to make the decision. Is essence of what.
The town will decide ultimately because they'll be the ones to decide whether a certificate of occupancy can be issued.
But we're, we are saying that the town can't issue one until, I mean, this, what this says, the town can't issue one until these following things are done, right?
Correct, yes.
Well, I think as-built plans aren't delivered until after the certificate of occupancy anyway, so. That's one of the things that we um, would take out, and I think again, the others would be up to the building inspector anyway to decide whether it's substantially complete.
Does the town have a response to this? Ms. Williams or Mr. Malloy?
Oh, yeah, I, I, you know, we, we have this condition, and I think the last few permits, and we actually have it in a lot of um. Bigger special permits or site plan review, so I'm not sure the concern of this, uh. You know, I, I, I noted it this afternoon, but I haven't talked to the building commissioner, what he would think, so usually. Right, we'd want the building commissioner to certify that it's substantially complete, and you know, that's, that's through the permit, that's through like, you know, all the inspections, so. You know, have, you know, are all the other inspectors plumbing. You know, gas, fire, whatever, electrical, and you know, have all that signed off on, and so then it's the building commissioner that makes sure it's all set, so I don't. I mean, usually, we, and we have those few other conditions just to make sure.
So, so weather conditions, I mean, I don't know that you can do the top coat necessarily until certain, you know, until certain times of the year. Landscaping certain time of the year, so I think we can still get a certificate of occupancy when some of those things aren't necessarily complete, so.
Well, this is, this is the, this is the final CO, right? It says the final certificate?
No, it's just says certificate of.
For the final unit.
It says the final, so the town often issues a certificate and then we'll do. Um, we'll extend it, and then the final is the final, and so typically, you know, it could be. A number of months where, you know, an applicant has extended a temporary CO, so we'll issue temporaries. And we can, you know, extend those, but we're not gonna issue the final until we know it's substantially complete. And so that's, the key word is the final certificate of occupancy, um, in this condition.
Do we, I don't think we have in here that there could be a temporary then, um, and maybe we can add that to be, provide comfort that. There will be a, you know, some type of CO issued before some of these things are done.
Sure, I mean, we, yeah, we, we, the town issues temporaries.
All the time.
Yep.
I'll defer to Jamie.
We can just think of some scenarios, uh, sometimes our funding, you know, is based on sort of final COs being, being issued, and. If for some reason, in, in the event this, you know. Section B says landscaping as showed on the approved plans has been completed, it doesn't say substantially completed, it says completed. And, you know, like, depending on when it's, when the building is placed in service, whether it's, you know, final CO or. Um, you know, temporary CO, that could have an impact on how the funding works once, once it comes to, um, you know, getting. Getting everything, I guess, you know, on, on record, and, you know, I, if there was, you know, if we were running late and it was November. And for some reason, there was an issue and the grass wasn't seeded or something like that, or, you know, certain plants weren't able to be planted and it held up a final CO. We would just like, we, we, we're not expecting, you know, to. I guess, we want it substantially complete, if it's substantially complete and it's, and, and, you know, by the building department and by the. By the, um, you know, by the town, is, we're, we're okay with that, but. This is very, it says has been completed, it doesn't say substantially completed for the final CO. There may be some little odds and ends and minor things that, you know, we would like some flexibility in that.
The final certificate shall not be issued until work has been substantially completed as verified by the architect or appropriate design professional. You know. I hate to defer something more, I mean, the goal was to try to get as much as we can do, get done tonight. But we're in an area that I am just not familiar enough with, I don't know if any other member on the. The board is familiar with when of the temporary certificates of occupancy, certificates of occupancy, what the building commissioner feels. He is com, when he is comfortable with issuing a, a final certificate of occupancy. What the, the applicant feels they need to be able to go out and get financing. And if a temporary would solve that problem, and a temporary is, I know something that's done. All the time until the work is completed and the final certificate doesn't come till everything is done. Um, but there's gotta be a way, we've built, we've built these things before, you have built these things before. There's gotta be a way that we can, we can come up with a, um, that you can come up with language that works for everybody. I just, I, I just gotta believe there, there's a way to come up with language that works for everybody on something. As basic as when you issue, issue a final certificate of occupancy, so I. I would encourage this, that we get a, a decision, some, an agreement on this and come back to us, but this. This, we can't rely upon the board to make the decision on this technical nature unless somebody is. As expert in, a member of the board is expert on this matter. Mr. Henry, you were gonna say something and I was, um, I cut, I didn't cut you off, but I hadn't finished yet, so go ahead.
It's okay, um, I just wanna make sure I understood Mr. Gruber correctly, so if I, if I heard correctly, without a certificate of occupancy. It creates a funding issue.
Okay.
It, yes, it could, it could.
It could or it will?
It could.
Okay.
And does a temporary one work, temporary, does, does that give you what you need for funding? Or is that also, it could?
It, it could, these, these deals are all very similar, but they have their own little nuances to each, each one of them.
So the goal here is, the goal here is that we want, we want it to get all done, right? And if we issue a certificate of occupancy and it's not all done, it, what requires you to get it all? To, to complete all the, the building, if we issue the final certificate of occupancy, is there a way the town can go, come back? And I don't think this is gonna happen, but, you know, you have to prepare, that's what these conditions are about, you have to prepare for it. Is there a way for the town to come back and say, you know, you didn't do, do all the things you're supposed to do, or you said you would do? And that's what, and the, the final certificate of occupancy is sort of the leverage that the town has, is part of the leverage the town has to make sure things get done. So how do we navigate between those two desires, number one, not to handicap you from getting financing, and number two, to make sure that. What you said you're gonna do, you're, you're doing before people are in there and building it, uh, living in it.
Right, and I, and my experience has been that substantial completion, we do get a CO because we do need it for getting retainedage, we need it for the. For the closing on tax credits and finishing the closing, so doing our final closing with our final, with our closeout on our construction lender. So, um, so it could be an issue, so.
Okay, so, alright, so we can't, we're not gonna decide tonight. Forty one goes to, um, Murray, Fryman. Malloy, Williams, negotiate this and come back to us with your recommendation is what, is what my feeling would be, Mr. Slobodar, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little bit confused about the word final. I mean, a final certificate would seem to me to be tied to the final part of construction. Why is a final certificate? Um, why does a final certificate not require? Why would it require only substantial completion instead of complete completion? Which I know is a redundancy, but English is a little vague sometimes. So, why, why would, and why would a lender expect a final certificate? Before. Construction is complete?
Yeah, it, a lot of the things rely on substantial completion, I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'll take a look at the building code and see what that, you know, when those. You know, what, what it says for substantial completion, but I know that's the standard that we use.
And is substantial ninety eight percent, is it ninety five percent, is it just a few? Is, does substantial mean that. Pla, uh, landscaping plantings perhaps that can't get put in the ground because it's too cold? Is the only thing that's not completed?
Yeah, I mean, typically, there's a reason why it can't be done, and a lot of times it's weather related.
Okay.
Okay, so. The town has an interest in getting this project, they support it a lot, they support it financially, they wanna be partners with Wayfinders in building this project. Wayfinders wants to be able to go out and get their financing, everybody's working towards the same goal here. We are having, just, we're having confusion about technical terms that are beyond. The, my knowledge, and I think I can speak for other board members, their knowledge right now, so I'm gonna. Ask, we go back and work on this, that everybody that is working on it wants to get the same thing done. I'm, I'm certain that we can come up with language that works for both the applicant and well as the, the town. And we have done these before, you've done these before, this has got, we gotta be able to work this out, we're just not gonna be able to do it tonight. So forty one.
And if I may ask one more question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I, I imagine that Wayfinders have arguably a preferred lender that they've worked with in the past. Are you guys going back to said lender and if, is it an opportunity to clarify? If that is a deal breaker with a certificate of occupancy?
I think we can look at it and look at standards from other documents that we have.
Okay.
Just to add on to that, that the funders, there's, there's multiple funders, it's not just one lender, it's multiple funders.
So, so, section D, or section C is, I think, let, the title is. Construction, aside from number twenty. And the first forty one that struck out and the last forty one that's listed here. There are no other, no objections to any other conditions except twenty, struck out forty one, and then the, the intact forty one, Mr. Gruber. Yep. You're, you're muted.
Unmuted, unmuted, I, um, can we go back up to thirty one, I believe, just to look at that? Oh, scroll down. Yeah, we were okay with that.
So is it your, who's, whose language is purple?
That's actually coming from Wayfinders, Mr. Chair.
So. So you're asking, you, you're setting a higher standard to have them cleaned and washed, washed is the process, clean is the result. Um, almost always, we say washed, I don't know that you want it to be clean because. Uh, you know, that's, that's the result, washed is the process. Um, and you can say that you've got it, if you've washed them, you've done it, but you may not, they may not be totally clean. Adjacent streets shall be swept as needed at a minimum daily to remove sediment and debris, other adjacent roads. So all adjacent streets shall be swept as needed to remove sediment and debris, adjacent streets shall be swept is, that's, that looks to be. Redundant. Adjacent streets shall be swept as needed to remove sediment and debris. As opposed to adjacent states shall be swept as needed at a minimum daily. So you don't want the minimum daily, what's your objection to is the minimum daily?
Yeah.
You know, it. This has been approved without, so I, I don't think you want clean, so I, let's go back to washed, right? I think I'm protecting you there, I'm helping you out.
Okay.
Alright, washed is better than clean for you guys, and I think it accomplishes what we want. Um, so if, if it is, there's a lot of dirt and other things that are, um. Res, that results from rain or other kinds of stuff. If it's. I, you know, if, if it happens each day, you gotta take care of it. Other adjacent roads, I don't think this is a, a, a huge burden, adjacent streets shall be swept as needed at a minimum daily. Cause you have trucks coming in and out to remove sediment and debris, okay, other adjacent roads. Shall be swept as needed to remove sediment and debris, what's the difference between an adjacent street and an adjacent road?
I don't know that there is one, that's probably just language that, you know, has, uh, has crept in there. Um, I, I think the, I think the intent to your point, Mr. Chair, is that. The, the access way, you know, the, the immediate roadways to access the site are to be swept daily. And we all recognize that sometimes it could spill out onto some of the adjacent roads.
And needed.
As needed, yes.
Yeah, I think that's right. Mr. Slobodar.
It seems that as needed and at a minimum daily are not really compatible. If it's not. If it's not needed on a given day, do you still have to sweep it because it's daily? It, as, as needed would indicate a difference, a different. Requirement than every day if on any given day it simply is not needed.
Right, but it also means you could be swept more than once a day.
It could be. I mean, it seems like you're, I'm trying, I guess maybe I'm also trying to protect Mr. Gruber on this, if there's a day that they don't need to sweep. I don't know if he needs to sweep.
Yeah, well, that's why we took it out, we just wanted it as needed, on an as-needed basis.
Oh, as needed in what I see is also crossed out.
Yeah.
And then it, it continues to the next sentence, though, I think.
It's as neat, shall be swept as needed.
So what they're proposing is that it would simply read adjacent suite, streets shall be swept as needed. To remove sediment and debris.
Right.
You know, that's, that should be fine. And if it's a problem, that, that, that their as-needed determination. Is creating problems for the neighborhood around, I'm sure that the town will hear about it and. Um. It can enforce, enforce them to do it more frequently, would that be correct? If they're, and I'm sure as, on a daily basis is there to make sure that. It's, it's, the, the immediate street is done all the time and is clean and, and, uh. And as needed, relies upon their judgment as to whether it's needed or not, and if it's not being, and I guess we have to, to. Um. Rely upon their judgment that it's needed, and if their judgment that it's needed is not, um, is. Is not sufficient, that, that, there's a lot of dirt and the neighbors and everybody else are complaining about all the dirt coming into their. Their yard, the town will hear about it, and the commissioner will go out to them and tell them to do it more frequently, I would think, so. Let's use Mr. Slobodar's language and rely upon the town to enforce that their, um. and rely upon the town to enforce that their that the sweeping will be done as often as needed unless there's, and if not, there'll be complaints. Is that fair?
So we're leaving it as it is?
No.
No, I'll tweet it.
Jason's, Jason's streets shall be swept as needed to remove sediment and debris.
Okay.
Okay? So it's gonna be washed and adjacent streets as needed. All right?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. All right. So back to the question before us is from the beginning of section C through the new forty-one. We have work to be done on number twenty, number forty-one is struck through and number forty-one. Right?
Yes.
Without objection, we tentatively approve the other conditions, all the other conditions in this section. All right, let's move on to the next section. Landscaping. Go back up, all right. Gotta be done with the plan. The applicant shall maintain as shown on the approved plans and required as the comprehensive permit, any landscaping that does not survive shall be replaced. Number forty-four, maximum extent practicable, shall use natural herbicides and non-toxic chemicals for regularly scheduled treatment. Number forty-five, all mature trees found within the project site as shown on the approved plans, including perimeter trees, except for the trees designated on the landscaping plan noted for removal, shall remain and be maintained as to provide a visual screening for adjacent properties. Who's, what's, who's yellow?
So the highlight, the highlight, Mr. Chair, was just mine to draw the board's attention just to this language. Um, I don't recall off the top of my head whether this was in the Valley CDC decision or not. It is language that we've used before, but wasn't sure whether we've used it in Amherst or not. And then the, the red underlined unless otherwise approved by the board that was added by Wayfinders.
I just have a question. Is locusts used anywhere else? Do we have that defined?
Yeah, we we use project site most of the time, but locusts is at the very beginning.
I think it's reasonable. The trees that we're talking about are all, almost all big trees. Five and a foot tall. Some species of mummacal, two and a half inches. I don't know how tall a two and a half inch caliper tree is. And I don't know where we would have approved something otherwise than that. I guess that's if it's I don't have a problem with this. Anybody, Ms. Fryman, do you?
No, this is fine with if you're okay with us allowing for that a little bit of flexibility there if necessary.
So all right, your hand's up, so you probably wanna take that down.
Thank you.
All right. So I have no, I think we've approved, tentatively approved all the conditions in landscaping. All right, let's move on to the next. Parking, and circulation. Fifty-two parking spaces, these numbers are all correct. Electric charging vehicles still comply with the stretch code. Except accessible parking shall be designated, there's no, nobody has a problem with this one. Forty-six, nobody has a problem with forty-seven. Forty-eight will be for residents of the site and shall be managed as the parking management plan. Parking on-site for residents of the Beltratown Road Site and residential visitors shall be managed. Okay, there's, there's the visitors that we dealt with in there earlier. And that's highlighted because it was already dealt with someplace else, is that right?
It it was something that just, we dealt with it by virtue of the revised management plan that we went over earlier tonight, so that that can now be unhighlighted as resolved.
Right, it's resolved. Good. Ms. Fryman, you don't wanna have the obligation to work with the town to establish?
The issue is that is with the lenders, because when we close, we have to provide a certificate to the state, to HLC of how we are dealing with every single condition. And we have to have either we've done it or when we will do it, and it's gotta be very definitive. So having something like open-ended like this is very concerning that it could create a lot of problems. So.
But all you're required to do is work with. It's not saying you have to achieve it. And so.
People say that the parking is okay now and we can possibly work with the town to maybe increase, possibly increase. I, I'm just nervous about having something so open-ended like this. So.
Right, the applicant shall work with. Seems to me you complied with the responsibility. You complied with the condition. If you just send a letter saying that that's, that you wanna see permit parking on in front of the site. But I would hope you do more than that and talk to the town. I don't know. I know you're trying to protect yourself from all contingencies, but it seems to me that if you shall work with the town planner, you write a letter to the town council and you work, and you have, you document, you had a meeting with the town planner. You complied with this requirement, and I hope you do more than just simply the, you know, those two things, but that would be complying with this requirement. This, because I think it's, their parking is gonna be in the southeast street is gonna be an issue, and we hope the town helps you resolve, works with you to resolve that.
All right, let me see if I can work on this. Let me see, it's something that makes me feel a little more comfortable.
All right. I number fifty-one will hold off on, you have come up with language, great, but I'm inclined to want this condition. So for parking, what do we have? Let's scroll to the beginning of this section, section E. Everything, so forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight are tentatively approved unless there's objections. If not, let's move on to the next one, fifty-one, you're gonna try to come up with other language. Signs, all applicable address and or unit identifications will be reflective nature, no problem. Construction of identification signs shall be installed, no problem. Applicants shall install zoning compliant wayfinding signs at appropriate locations as determined or as shown on approved plans. So you don't have them on your plans yet, right? You don't have the wayfinding signs on plans?
Well, I think, I don't know that we do, but we may need to adjust them, so I don't wanna necessarily, well, I don't know, Jamie, are they?
Isn't this, isn't science one of those things that can be changed as insignificant?
Yes, right?
Yeah, do we show the wayfinding signs too? On?
Well, the wayfinding signs would be, you know, as appropriate as determined by the applicant, so if we did, you know, need a sign somewhere to help guide people to, you know, to a certain place or something like that, then I I do believe that they are exempt from the zoning. Are, is that, is that correct? Are they, you know, from the sign requirements?
Yeah, I believe they are, so.
What you're looking at are signs put on the wall of the building? Is that what we're talking about? So that it says all deliveries to the rear? Is that what we're looking at here? These, those kind of wayfinding?
They're not necessarily on the build, on a building. They could be just posted on the you know, post in the ground with arrows or, you know, directing people. Well, I think if we say as determined by the applicant or as shown on the approved plan, so that it could be either if we need to adjust it and not have to come back to the ZBA, that would be acceptable.
But I, I, yeah. Aren't those? Ms. Murray, I recall that there's substantial amount of discretion given to the building commissioner to allow insubstantial modifications.
You're right, Mr. Chair, and I was just looking at the field conditions changes, and it's in paragraph twenty-one of the decision, but it doesn't explicitly say anything about signs. We could certainly add something in about the wayfaring signs if you are inclined to do that. Um, but otherwise, as I recall, the wayfaring signs are not currently shown on the plans. I don't know if there is an intent to. So my only concern with the languages proposed by the applicant is they decide how many wayfaring signs and how big the wayfaring signs are and where they should be just on their own. I think that might be a little bit too much discretion.
Mr. Sloveter has his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Sloveter.
Didn't we already review and approve signs identifying the property there? I seem to remember two posts that looked like four by four or six by six posts with a board in between the posts, and they were reasonably attractive, and I thought we actually approved that.
Those aren't the way.
If, if we did, because you you've mentioned wayfarer signs a few times. This, this particular item seems to be dealing with fairly relatively insignificant directional indications, right? That's what, that's what I thought we approved. So this, this seems to be a relatively insignificant discretionary kind of sign that tells the UPS and FedEx drivers where to go. I've often wanted to tell my FedEx driver where to go, but I don't have a sign. But this, this seems to be discretionary. Why can't the building commissioner or somebody who's not us tell them where a sign like that would go? And a sign like that also would seem to have a limited number of options. It has to go where the driver's going to see it. And it's gonna tell them where to go, so this, this should be easy to solve, I would think.
Yeah. And it has to comply with the zoning laws, the zoning bylaw, right, and by the nature of the condition. Right?
Can we have it that it comply with zoning? I mean, that's, we're not asking for a waiver, so. Can we just say that it complies with, that we'll do signs that comply with zoning?
Well, that was essentially what was there.
Yeah.
And then take out as of shown on the approved plans, then.
Right, and I would, I would also suggest we take out as determined by the applicant.
Yeah.
The zoning compliant wayfaring sign.
Yeah, because it will be.
Yeah, you gotta have zoning compliant wayfaring signs. Boom.
I think that's fine. I think then it is on our determination.
Right.
Okay.
So we're then take everything from asked through the parents as shown in approved plans, parents. Delete that. Yeah. All right. That should do it.
Okay.
Okay, done.
I would just add that you go from F to H, so others should be G.
Yeah, that that'll all get cleaned up in the, in the, when we start accepting some of these changes.
Okay, so tentatively approve the sign section. Mr. Gruber, you have your hand up? Is that just? Is that for a reason?
Uh, no, I, sorry, I was taking it down and then I looked and wrote a note, so my.
All right.
All set, thank you.
Other, building plans shall meet all relevant building code requirements and shall be approved, but no problem there. Seven of the total units designed to meet group two ways accessibility standards for dwelling units. This is highlighted just to make sure that, why?
That was just exactly that, to confirm that we've got that correct.
Right, and we do. Right? Seven is the right number? Mr. Gruber?
Uh, yes, and and we will, we will double check this too in the, you know, again with our architectural staff, but but we have and believe that's correct, and if there's a change, we'll, we'll make that.
Well, if it isn't, get back to us, but we're gonna approve it now.
Yeah.
Um, the exception of those seven units described in preceding paragraphs. This, in effect, we're making these these rooms, these, these other units can be visited, but they're not ADA, for lack of a better term, ADA compliant. So this was all laid out in the, in the original plans. This is, this is, this is consistent with the original plans, correct?
That, that is, that is correct.
All right. So fifty-four is right, fifty-five. Flowflow plumbing is great, central trash is, and shall be screened from public view. You actually added extra screening. The building shall be serviced fully operational by public spaces. Each dwelling unit shall include, including all, shall have code compliance sprinklers, yes. All residential units shall have access. So, okay. So all residential units shall have access to operable window, window or windows to open and close.
That's an issue.
Okay, what's the issue?
We don't have all the units that have operable windows, that can open and close. So I didn't know where, if that, where that requirement came from. So we can tell you which ones, but it's not a hundred percent.
Again, Mr. Chair, my, my recollection is that was important during the Valley CDC.
Valley CDC, yeah.
Yeah, and but we were also dealing with, you know, individual homeowners there.
This is, I I, you know, I love to have everybody have an operable window, but that's not your design, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm.
I guess we could delete this, Mr. Chair.
Um, I do have a question, though. Is that not, is that not something that a building code requires that everyone have an operable window? No?
So. If I, if I may, I reached out to the architect on this and historically, before there was mechanical ventilation to bring fresh air into the buildings, they, they relied upon the, the window openings for for ventilation. And these do have operable windows, I believe. Not all, in our, in our, not all of the windows are operable. Some of them, you know, may be fixed. And that is the, the ventilation is provided mechanically here. So they will be to code. The buildings are to code. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it answers my question, but I just, I think it's a little strange. Like, what if there's a fire and someone needs to get out? Their window can't open.
Well, I, you know, I agree with that, but the code the, the condition can't override the state building code. Right, if the state, you know, this has to be this has gotta be built within, compliant with the state building code. And if the building commissioner or, or Ms. Williams, I think you raised a good question. Go back and look at it and see what, what you find out, but if the building code permits some units not to have opening windows, they're complying with the building code.
And the sprinkler system, I think, is compensates for that situation.
All right. So.
I'm still learning, so thank you. I'm just asking a clarifying question.
It's a good question, and I like open windows. Anyway, so this could be removed. Sixty, the Beltratown Project includes demolition. This is saying that and we got partial demolition of the existing school building on the southeast street. This just says that we're acting for the, the demolition permits for the, actually, the historical society and we're granting that because this is what a comprehensive permit. We're granting that because this is what a comprehensive permit does. Town's department is shall be responsible for assigning streets and addresses, no problem. Show detail for all fuel storage to the fire department's approval, yep. Comprehensive permit shall not be transferred or assigned without written approval from the board or any other. In any proposal to transfer or assign, she'll be a substantive change, comes back to us, not a problem. Sixty-four, no slope created by the filling, she'll be finished to grading exits of the natural angle of reap, natural angle of repose. All filled areas are not built upon within one year, shall upon completion of the operation be covered with not less than four inches of long. Is there any other problems with um numbers sixty, what is this? Let's go back up. To, okay, section H, we have uh only that one that we're gonna check on the windows. You're gonna look at that, but we, right now, we have tentatively approved all the conditions. In H and deleting the one with the windows, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the next area. Management, okay, let's start, go back here, all right. We're at nine fourteen is um. We've had, I think there's just ten more conditions. I'd like to run through, get completed tonight, and I appreciate everybody's patience getting this done. The project shall comply with all terms of the management, the approved management plan. All right, the, so the management plan is just says, look at the management narrative. And you look at the management narrative and it deals with many things, but it doesn't deal with all of this, and so. Some of this has to be taken out, so the management plan addresses property management, operations, maintenance to some extent. Marketing and leasing, trash and recycling, yes, odor mitigation measures, I don't know where that comes from. I don't think that the management plan deals with that. Litter control, um, just in general. You know, it doesn't really deal with that either. It does deal with off-street parking. It does, the the management plan doesn't deal with bicycle storage, but the the um. It it's taking place other, it's taking care of other places, so let's strike out bicycle storage.
Okay.
Management plan does deal with sight lighting. It does deal with signage, it does deal with landscaping maintenance, it does deal with snow removal. It does deal with, I don't know if it deals with stormwater management.
No, we have the separate O and M plan for that, so no.
That's right. Prevented maintenance and capital needs, I don't think it deals with that.
No.
Um, security, there's not, the word security isn't used anyplace, anywhere. This is the first time I've seen the word security. In this whole um application. Off-street loading, unloading, noise mitig, um, that's in the parking plan, that's not the management plan, I don't think. Noise mitigation, that's not in the management plan, that's in the um. Well, it might be tenant noise mitigation, but mostly that's construction, complaint response procedure. Uh, that's not in the management plan, but it's in the 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 lease and it's other places. Overall sustainability, I don't think that's in the management plan, and a healthy operation of the project, I don't know what that means.
I don't either, you're.
Right, so I was. Miss Fryman.
Um, yeah, so thank you for going through this, but we I was just even gonna say, why do we even need this at all? Since everything is in the management plan and if we miss something, I I don't, and if you look at sixty-eight, I think again, it just recaps. All of everything that we're dealing with in the management agreement, so I think these can be collapsed. And if you want to say including, you know, that it includes matters, you know, such as or including but not limited to, so it's. You know, if you want to recap some of the, or itemize some of the things that are in there, but I don't know that we need all three.
Well, let's hold on, go to the top of this again. What it says is that you've got to, the management um. So this condition says you have a management plan, this is almost a finding. As is stated, this is states, not what they're supposed to do, but states the conditions, that the management plan addresses these things. And doesn't require an action on their part.
Yeah, I think sixty-seven, quite frankly.
Yeah, I agree, let's get rid of it. Projects of private development, as such, the applicant shall be. Let's keep on scrolling down there. Responsible for, except not limited to driveway, pedestrian, walkways, stormwater, landscaping, space removal, trash pickup, town ramps, no responsibility. For the duration of the ground lease, okay, that's that's a reasonable change, I think.
Yeah.
In accordance with the plan, plan and part-time property managers shall be in. Site during normal business hours and typical hours shall be posted in the lobby in the building. Twenty-four hour date, in addition, the applicant shall provide residential services for the hours a week to address tenant needs. To make an accommodation, shall make accommodations to meet with tenants requiring services on weekends and outside of our door. So that goes to the earlier discussion we have, and the language here is the residential services shall make accommodations. To meet with tenants requiring services on weekends. And Mister Gruber, I'm assuming that you're uncomfortable with that and you'd rather have us not have that language.
Um, yeah, and it has to do with the, you know, the the thirty hours a week um. To to address, you know, it it could be, it could be twenty, it could be thirty, it's, you know, it's sort of dependent on the need. Um, there, so.
But the thirty hours is what is then, is the approximate number that your person gave us. Right?
Yes, is that, that's, and that would be thirty thirty hours, I guess, maybe for both sites, right?
Well, no, that's not what I took, but. But where that's, she said, we're there about thirty hours a week, we try to, we'll we'll try to reach out to people, we're we're flexible for. Resident services, and again, it's approximate, we're not saying, we're not telling you what the, you know, that you have to be there from nine to five. And it's not always thirty hours, and it's approximately thirty hours. So I think there's flexibility there for you, and it's what, it's kind of what we heard when the presentation was made to us. So anybody else have, anybody else feel that this is too restrictive on the board? Mister Sloviter.
I, it doesn't strike me as overly restrictive, I'm not. Very familiar with the Wayfinders operation, but a building of um the Belcher Town Road size. Has enough occupants in it that I think there should be a. A uh, a staff member on site. A significant amount of the time, you don't know what's going to come up. They need to find somebody, and if they call the emergency number or whatever, answering service, that's a delay that. Residents need to find somebody to help them. I I don't think this, this doesn't strike me as burdensome.
This this is specific to the resident service coordinator as opposed to onsite maintenance personnel?
Well, isn't that what they?
What's the difference?
Well, but that's.
Can I, can I just ask that Attorney Fryman be let back in? I think she was kicked out.
Well, I don't know if she was kicked out, perhaps she, something happened, no one has um released anyone from the meeting. I only see two people in the attendees, and that's, that's Attorney Fryman is not one of them.
You said she's trying to get back on?
I don't see her.
Till she does, Mister White. Did you, did you, you, all, your picture appeared, did you have your hand, did you want to speak?
Oh, no, 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 Mister Chair, you asked if anyone had um anything to add, so I wanted to shake my head no.
Oh, got it, all right. So Mister Gruber, we'll wait to have further discussions about this till Miss Fryman comes on, but um. We'll get back to, we can get back to that, the discussion we had earlier. The project shall conform in all aspects to the Amherst Residential Rental Bylaw. To the boilerplate language about logging complaints, we don't have that here.
No, we've got that from another decision.
Okay, scroll back up and Mister Gruber has a question, yes, Mister Gruber.
Um, yes, on the boilerplate language um from the. The residential rental, is that from the residential rental bylaw?
No, but but logging, this is different, this is logging complaints. This is the standard language we use in every, almost every non-owner occupied. Rental property in town, we require that they log complaints and violations themselves. That they report those once a year when they're gonna get their rental. Um, rental, residential rental permit renewed. And it's, it's it's standard operate, it's it's standard um language that we use in almost all of our. In all residential, non-owner occupied residential property.
I'm pulling it up.
I I, you should have, you should be able to look at it, um, I'm I'm, we don't have the language tonight.
Okay, I I guess my question was just that if it's a process through the residential rental bylaw and in updating that permit, we will be getting the. Permit, so we will have to follow the.
It's not a part of the residential permit bylaw, it's a separate thing that was done, it's been done.
One second, everyone, one second.
All right, you know, we're not gonna be able to. It is not fair to them to have them look, look at it tonight for the first un, first impression. So let's send that language to them from past script, past decisions and have them look at it and come back, but I'm. I I have a hard time believing that we won't require that when we require it from almost every other rental bylaw. The rental um, non-owner occupied rental property in Amherst.
So if I may, Mister Chair, I, we don't have um the text in front of us, maybe.
We don't.
Uh, maybe Jacinta will uh put the conditions back up in a moment, um. But one of the questions off to the side on this condition from Wayfairs is um. Whether the the comprehensive permit can serve as the rental permit for the initial first year of occupancy. And I think that that would be um. Would be sort of a, I guess, a limited waiver, if you would, not a total waiver under the residential rental bylaw, but. At least if they're looking to get a pass for the first year.
Yeah, I. But I I guess why, you know, I mean. Why do they want to pass for the, if it's something they're gonna have to do for the next thirty years, why, why should they not do it the first year, but. I mean, Mister Gruber, you had your hand up?
I was gonna ask um to let uh, Miss Fryman.
Thank you, I apologize, I got kicked out, thank you.
We'll get back to him just into that just a second, so. We're gonna get the language for seventy, you're gonna get the language on the um logging.
Yes.
All right, this is the first. Use of the word security and security system shall be installed set forth in the management, what, what is this and um? Is this something, does this come from the, from Wayfinders or? I don't remember any.
I don't, I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember it in Valley CDC, but it must have been one of the previous decisions we looked at, but. Um, I I don't recall that we had, have had any discussion here about security cameras one way or the other.
Right, and and Mister Gruber, do you even, do you intend to have security cameras?
We will, we have secure, we have, we have uh cameras on on all of our properties.
All right, and so you have security cameras, security systems. Are you gonna have um key cards for people to get into the doors? Is that part of your security system?
Uh, yeah, typically, yeah, typically, we we have that depending on um, you know, where. How it's, you know, if there's a key card or a, you know, or a key that that opens a door, but a key card for sort of like the common areas, I believe, is is how. It it will oper, you know, that that's how it's in, you know, will operate.
Okay, so the security cameras are not on the plans yet, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, they're not in the management plan. Anyplace.
Yes, that that is, those those plans, those will be developed.
Okay, so you need to add where the, you need to add the security cameras to the plans, the building plans. You need to add it to the the management plan, you need to tell us. How, if you're gonna have a security system, just briefly, is it gonna be a key system, is it gonna be a card system? Is there, just describe it in some, set forth in some way, and then amend the management plan to have that there. Uh, and where, you know, but you do need to put. The security cameras on the the building plans. Right? Cause.
Is there, is there a way we could describe that, um, just, you know, in the narrative that that they will be provided at, you know, sufficient, sufficient areas to. Um, you know, as as determined by the the property management staff.
Might be premature to put them on plans.
Well. Do you have, do you have a security consultant that helps you do this? Wouldn't they? Wouldn't the security cameras be? I guess the question is, if it's just set in the management plan. It's not part of the building plans, if you put them up and you haven't indicated it on the building plans or on the completed plans. You're doing something that's not permitted, that's not consistent with the approved plan, right? That's, isn't that the problem here? Miss Murray, am I missing something?
No, you're you're not missing something, I mean, I I suppose even if we step back from this, I know. Uh, sometimes some property owners are reluctant to have their security cameras. And security systems shown on plans which are public records. I don't know if that is a little bit of the hesitancy, or it's just that the plans haven't been completely, um, you know, developed yet. I I guess we could also step back from this and ask ourselves, is it important to us that there be a condition? That the security cameras be shown on the plans at this stage?
You know, I don't know what is the town policy on this in the past, right? This is just, this is all new to me, all um sort of first impression, so. At the minimum, you have to amend the management plan to talk about your security cameras and to talk about the system that you have for security. Just briefly, it just has to be there because um. If you're gonna rely upon that, it has to be in the plan. Mister Sloviter.
Does, I guess this is a um addressed to Mister Gruber. Do you have, I I believe you indicated that you have security cameras and security systems on other buildings. Do you have a favored? System. That that you're using on another building that you intend to use on these buildings? And if so. Could you provide us with a fairly detailed, I would imagine if you're already using one. Could you supply us with a. A a description of how it is handled in another building? In the way that you intend to handle it in these buildings? Is it already established?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand uh the the question exactly as far as, you know. There's, it's a security system, it's a secu, you know, there are cameras, right, and they're monitored, like a description of. How, you know, that there's, that there's cameras, it's monitored, it, you know, there's um. It's monitored by staff, it's, you know, how long, whatever they keep the. The, I guess, the footage, footage for is, I mean, is that, that is that the this, like, how specific you'd like? The narrative to be on the security system, um, the security systems are 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 like any set of plans that. Um, and they're developed, you know, certain things like, you know, if if. The plans as they're developed from sort of design development through the construction stage. They get tweaked a little bit, you know, the security cameras have to move a little bit or something gets in the way and um, but. So. You know, I guess I'm not sure if. I I'm not really sure, I guess, what you're asking for, like, another. I I'm not really sure, I guess, what you're asking for, like, another building, you wanna see another plan of another, of another um.
Do you wanna just, we have a security system and that you have a condition that we have a security system, is that enough? I mean, without going into too much minutia and.
Well, the, it said, it says that is, that a security, uh the cameras in a system shall be installed. So I I guess what I'm asking as a bit of a shortcut, just so that we can get a better understanding of what you plan to do. If you have a functional, proven, favored security system in another building, it must have come from a specific manufacturer. So you could indicate who, what equipment you're using. You could give an idea of how many cameras are at, wh- where are the security cameras? Are they at every door? Are they in hallways? I don't know what you do. And there might even be information that is published by the manufacturer of your security system that would indicate, is it um magnetic card entry? Is it push button where all the occupants have their own code? So you know who goes in, like in ho- like the system that's used in hotels. I'm I'm thinking, I was involved in a hotel once. And uh the system that was used in that hotel could be explained if we were going to build another hotel. And we could just say, well, this is what we're using in the established hotel. And we plan to use it in the new facility, and here's how it works. So I'm trying to get information without asking if uh for specific plans in the event that is intrusive to your security.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Henry.
Um, actually, if I'm in Mr. Gruber, is it fair to say that, I mean, from the, from the questions Mr. Gruber is asking, um, I surmise that while there is an intent to have security cameras and systems, you guys don't have one in place or thought of what you're gonna put in there as of right now?
Yeah, I think this is a little premature to have this, these kinds of details um at this time.
Yeah.
And again, and we do have the confidentiality issue of being, of disclosing this information, having it be public.
But you could describe in the management plan, you could describe what your intention is and what, where you have, where you wish to have security. For example, you could say, security camera, security will be provided for safety in the um parking lots, the entrance. And I don't know if you wanna do it in the building itself, you may not, but you can describe that. You could describe it'll be by, through the use of cameras. And you could talk about how you provide security, you could describe how you provide security to enter and exit the building. You could do that in the management plan, right?
We can, we can work on something, we can work on something for that.
And Mr. Slubiter, that would, that would come towards what you were asking, not fully what you were asking, but it would, it would move in that direction.
Yes, it will, yes.
And Mr. Mr. Henry, I think you're right that they may not have any decision. But this would, this would then stimulate them or require them to give some thought to this in the next month. So we could have this as a condition. Does that?
It it is, and and to make sure it's not overly burdensome on Wayfinders.
Yes.
I don't think we should ask for a specific brand or, you know, have them because again, you know, as they build, things may change and where cameras may be positioned, they may need to be adjusted. So as long as there is a commitment and we put this condition in there to Mr. Slubiter's point, to Mr. Judge's point, so that there is a plan for a security system. And here, we just don't have a specific system in mind as of right now. I am okay with that, and I will support that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Um, I can I offer up a suggestion? So we've addressed part of the concern by having some sort of description in the management plan. But if there are concerns about seeing the cameras on the plans themselves, is that something, and this is also a question for Attorney Murray, is this something that we can maybe fold in, going back to, I think it's section C, uh number forty-one, before they get their final certificate of occupancy? That needs to be on the plans as well. So it's not necessarily being made public, but it is being shown or given to the building commissioner and to the town, so that we know that it's there.
That's still making it public.
Right, it would still be a public record once submitted to the building commissioner.
I think we can deal with what um Chairman Judge is saying.
And if, this is all, okay, well, let's try that. Come up with a, come up with narrative for the management plan narrative that gives a description that we were talking about. And if the building commissioner sees this and says, no, I need to see where those, those are gonna be, then we have a problem. But I don't think that's gonna be the case. All right, let's come up with this, let's make sure that the building commissioner uh is comfortable with it. But it seems to me it makes sense to have a narrative that describes what you intend. Okay? All right. The next one is seventy-two, so so seventy-one, we're gonna have further description in management plan. All right, seventy-two, the project shall dispose of, the project, I mean, that just seems like a weird word.
I think we should say the project shall provide for refuse and recyclable disposal.
How about just saying refuge, to start out with, refuge and recyclables shall be okay, all right, that's fine.
Or rework.
I don't care, I don't care, I don't care about the English.
You know what she mean.
All residential tenants shall adhere to off-street parking, that's and unloading criteria is a fourth of the management plan, all moving days and times will be scheduled with onsite management. You know, I, that seems to me to be um micromanaging, I I don't have any problem with getting rid of this. And number seventy-three, yeah, you have to tell them about the laws. All right, let's go back up to the left, to that one we were talking about when when Ms. Fryman was off. Which one was that?
Was that number seventy, Mr. Chair, about the residential rental um bylaw that, the the comment off to the side where Wayfinders was asking?
No, I, you know what I think it was, I think it was the thirty hours.
I was just about that, okay.
Yep, Mr. Gruber, you want to have Ms. Fryman on for a discussion about thirty hours a week? Is that correct?
Yeah, um, yes, and I just wanted to go back that, you know, it states the resident service coordinator. And there was a question regarding staff versus resident service coordinator and um I will, I will, I I can provide clarification as to the difference. If if you want the staff, you know, that that might be something, but we'll work on some language that.
But you know, what what we heard from your, your person, we talked a lot about this, that they got somebody there that could be responsive to the tenants around thirty hours a week, four, she talked Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, maybe sometimes in the weekend. That's kind of what we, that's where this comes from, right? Is is what you guys kind of represented you mean to do. And so I think we should, it's, that's not a, that's not a maintenance person, right? That's somebody that can, they're doing all sorts of work, they're doing administrative work there, they're there if there's a problem. Um and she said that there, you do that about thirty hours a week most places. So unless that was inaccurate, then you have to tell us that. But then we're kind of trying to hold you to your representation approximately. And it's not, you know, we're not saying thirty hours a week, fill out a time sheet, send it to the town, we gotta stamp it. It shows that that's the, that's what you intend to do. And if you're doing something, you know, you're only providing it eight hours a week, then you got a problem. But if you're providing it twenty hours a week sometimes and thirty hours a week the other time, I don't think you have a problem. It's what I'm saying, I I think that's, the the goal here is to have tenants able to meet with, to to talk with the resident services staff, right? Not, not just maintenance staff, but resident services staff, if they have a problem during the week. And for those that work nine to five jobs, they make, they try to, they will accommodate them at other times. So that's, that's what the thirty hours a week is. And I think you heard pretty strong support for that intention um from the members. Okay, let's move on. The last ones. That's it. Okay, so on set, so in this section, let's move up to the, let's move up to the top of the section, Ms. Williams. All right, in this section, management, number sixty-six, number sixty-seven goes out. Keep moving down. Sixty-eight. As amended, we, that's a, we wanna do that. Sixty-nine, I think you still have a problem with this, with sixty-nine, Mr. Gruber. If you do, come back to us next, at the next meeting, uh with other language, if you, if you wish. But for now, we're, we'll, we'll put this, we'll put this aside, right?
Yeah.
That's where I I intend, I think we intend to be. Seventy. Uh we, seventy, you need the additional language. And that, hopefully, you'll get some of that tomorrow. And we can also share that, and Ms. Williams, share that with all the board members, that residential language. Security cameras, you're gonna have a management plan, so that'll um, we'll keep that. Seventy-two, we'll, we'll keep that, seventy, and then seventy, we've jumped to seventy-six, we will delete that. And the last one we keep. Now numbered seventy-three. All right, is there any objection to approving all but seventy, seventy-one and sixty-nine? If not, well, we'll deem those tentatively approved. So what we've got for now is, aside from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, we have th- a total of thirteen conditions that there are either additional information we need for the applicant, language that you guys are gonna try to negotiate between staff and the applicant, or additional information that um, I guess those are the two possibilities. And those are gonna come back to us in the next meeting. And that will be in December twen- uh December twenty-first?
No, December nineteenth.
Nineteenth, December nineteenth. And what I hope at that point is that we pretty much narrow these down as much as possible, so we don't have to go through all this. Cause I would, what I would like to do on the nineteenth is move, be in a public meeting posture and start to approve these, finally approve these as amended, uh these conditions as amended, hopefully on the nineteenth. That would be my goal. So let's have, let's try to have these all done by the nineteenth with negotiations, okay?
Um, can I just say that, just with a nod to timing, let's not wait till like the seventeenth or the eighteenth to submit things, please? Um, so let's aim for one week before that.
Who's submitting the next round? Um where, how should that? Is it?
I think it makes the most sense, quite frankly. I'm gonna make the revisions that we've just discussed tonight and circulate that. And I know there's some things that the town needs to follow up on and a few things that that you folks wanna revise and finesse. So I'll take the first pass and circulate it, so that you guys then have the time to um propose some language.
Okay, it would be easy, I think, if you accept all the changes and then so the, what we just see is a compare just showing that the new edits then tonight.
Right, right, I will do that.
All right, so Ms. Murray will distribute that which you're gonna work, both in the new edits and that which you're gonna work on. You guys have, then within the next week or ten days after you get that, set up time to discuss this and have what agreements you can have to us a, at least a week before the next meeting. And if there are still issues in disagreement, have those identified and laid out for us to decide, cause we have to decide next. I'd like to decide, and I wanna decide in the next meeting on these conditions.
We were closed on the waivers and we sent a few additional edits, so we, I'd like to hopefully um between Terry Murray and myself, we could work those out to present the last version to the board also that night.
Yes. That's true, okay, is that a plan? Ms. Murray, you're gonna kind of run, you will run um um lead, run point on this and
Yeah.
The goal is to have stuff to us ahead of time, so we can work off that piece, I'd like to work off a written, a hard copy. Um it's so much easier than trying to work off the scroll. Think, work off a hard copy for a week ahead of time, okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. So it's nine forty-nine, Mr. Gruber.
Yes, I I just wanted to confirm, so the next meeting is on uh December nineteenth. The meeting after that will be on January ninth?
You know, we'll get to the, yeah, give it to him, when is the next meeting?
It would be January ninth, if we don't wrap everything up on the nineteenth of December.
Right, okay. All right, so we still haven't done findings, that's we, we have to do that as well. So we have findings, waivers and conditions to finalize before we can move on the, this application. And let's, let's not have, let's have as much settled as possible when we go into the next iteration. Okay, any other questions, comments from members? I will go to the public comment in a second, yes, Mr. Slubiter?
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify something in the hope of avoiding more discussion that doesn't get us anywhere, this is sort of aimed, I guess, mostly at Mr. Gruber. The intent that I'm, what I'm looking for in uh point sixty-nine is not to micromanage and it's not to identify titles. I don't even know the difference between a resident manager and a resident services coordinator, and I don't care. The intent of this is to ensure that the residents of these developments have appropriate access to staff and services that they need. That's all, uh that was, that was my intent in pursuing that. So that they can, I don't care what the number of hours is, that one came from you anyway. But the intent is to make sure that the residents are properly served and that they have access. That's it, so if you come back with any kind of an appropriate plan, I know I will be satisfied. That I just wanted to clarify that, so that you, we can get through this point and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no other comments from the board or from the applicant, the next order of business would be to have public comment on this matter. And Ms. Williams, do we have anybody who stayed with us this long grueling night?
Yes, we do.
And wants to say something sweet, something nice to us?
Um, they're there, but they don't have their hands raised, so I suspect they don't want to say anything to us.
Let's see. No, all right, no public comment. So, I, go ahead.
Sorry, if I, if I could just, since we're coming close to the end. Um, I know that uh there's a couple of members, obviously, Mr. Meadows is absent tonight. And I know that Mr. White, Mr. Slubiter each missed um a meeting previously. And we just need to make sure that if we're moving towards, um, taking some votes on December nineteenth, we need to make sure that everyone's got their Mullen certification form submitted. I know Mr. Henry already did it for the one night that he missed, so, um, if folks are looking for something to do over Thanksgiving, maybe they can go back and review the, uh, video, uh, from the missed meetings. And that would be, so we can make sure we have a full panel to vote.
Um, it's ready, Murray, just to address that, yes, they've already submitted their certifications and I've already filed it with the clerk. So all three have been filled out and certified and filed with the clerk's office.
Okay, so I'll note that, so it'll just be Mr. Meadows that we have to follow up with.
Correct, yes.
Great. Okay, I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing on this matter till December nineteenth at six o'clock, correct?
Yes.
All right, do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Slobodar?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing, there's one absent. The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. This is what anybody who wishes to can speak on any subject except the one, uh, except this comprehensive permit. I see no hands up?
No.
Next order of business is, um, any new business or anything that can come not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours? I think we've gone over the schedule, that's normally what we do in that time period. Any questions regarding process, this is the time to ask it. If not, uh, the last order. Yep?
Sorry if I may interject, Mr. Chair, I just have one announcement, um, on behalf of my colleague who is working with the Housing Production Committee. Um, he just wants me to let everyone know that Housing Production Plan is underway. They are currently doing a survey to just let people know, um, if you have any concerns about housing needs in Amherst, I'm just gonna share my screen really quickly, I can't do it for some reason. Um, if you have any concerns about housing needs or if you feel like you are impacted by housing in Amherst, um, if you go to our website under planning and under projects, you will see the Housing Production Plan and we just invite you to fill out that survey if you feel so inclined.
That Housing Production Plan happens every ten years?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this isn't, this is not an annual thing, this is long-term plan, so if you get a chance, fill it out. All right, if there's no other business before this body, um, and any other questions, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
I got, Mr. Slobodar and Mr. White has been, been talking, but he was muted, so I, there's the second. This motion is not debatable, even though I've been talking after the motion was made. Uh, the chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry? That was an aye, I think, and Mr. Slobodar?
And with the congratulations to our chair for a heroic effort tonight, aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thanks, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.